Good evening. I'd like to call the January 24th Board Meeting of the West State of School District Trustees to order. It is 6:01 and our first order of business is to do a roll call. I stand corrected. Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I got my boards mixed up. I chair another board and we do a roll call, so I apologize for that. The next item would be a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda, Clerk?
There are none. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Frazier. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes 5-0. This next item is the district received a complaint about a perceived violation of the open meeting law, and so it was agendized so that the Board can decide if they want to take action on that or not. And so I would open the floor to any motions if someone feels so led to do so. Trustee Frazier.
I move that pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74-208.7, based on receipt of an open meeting law violation and for the sole purpose of transparency, the Board acknowledge a perceived open meeting law violation and the Board accept self-recognition of an open meeting law violation occurring January 10, 2022. I further move that to cure any such violation, the Board declare the action and nominations and elections of Trustee Rusty Kofelt as Board Chair and Trustee Lori Frazier as Vice Chair and Nolan Boyd and of no effect at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to self-declare an open meeting violation. Do we have a second? Trustee Redford, we have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just one item of discussion. I will be abstaining from this vote. The complaint was addressed to a couple different trustees and I fully support the remedy and the self-disclosure. I was not involved in the complaint and I don't want to self-disclose and I also don't want to not vote for again. So I just wanted to let the Board know and ask that the record reflect that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of self-declaring an open meeting violation? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And we have one abstaining, excuse me. Motion passes 4-1 with one abstention. Okay, with the self-recognition of the open meeting violation, I will turn the meeting over now to Clerk Shepper for nomination for Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. The first item of business is the election of Board Chair. I will call for a nomination and then allow for a discussion and a vote. At this time, I will open the floor for the nomination of Board Chair with the reminder that nominations do not require a second. Is there a nomination at the time? Trustee Frazier?
I'd like to nominate Rusty Kofelt as Chair of our Board.
Thank you. And at this time, is there any discussion for Trustee Kofelt as Board Chair for 2022?
Clerk Shepper, sorry, I got it backwards. I just have a question for Trustee Kofelt. I think it'd be helpful to know what the open meeting law violation was that the Board just adopted and how you're going to lead differently from that experience.
The open meeting violation is a public document. Anybody can request it. I don't see the need to go through it. It was alleged that there was open meeting violation with discussions regarding Chair and the Vice Chair position. And so obviously, my goal as a Chair, and I think it would be our goal as trustees across the Board, that we make sure that we do our due diligence and everything possible to make sure that we do not infringe upon and violate open meeting laws. But to make sure that we're operating in a very transparent fashion, I think it was the right thing to do tonight to declare the open meeting violation and move on from there.
Is there any more or any further discussion? Okay, at this time, are there any other nominations? All right, we'll take a vote. Trustee Redford?
Aye.
Trustee Ozuna?
Nay.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Trustee Frazier?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson, sorry?
Nay.
And Trustee Kofelt?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 3-2. Congratulations, Trustee Kofelt.
Thank you. Okay, so we will open the nominations for Board Vice Chair. And as was mentioned with the Chair position, these motions do not require a second. So the floor is open for nominations for Vice Chair. Trustee Redford.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Frazier for Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Trustee Frazier. Any discussion?
Trustee Kofelt, same question for Trustee Frazier. I think a little different in this case. You've been a part of the Board and experienced open meeting law violations. Trustee Frazier is a little different, and I want to kind of preface it because one of the things that we expressed last time with two really fairly new folks in these roles is that we didn't have anybody with any history or experience. And we also have that similar situation among our administration team, too. So we've got a superintendent who's doing a great job but is in the first year, and a lot of our administration team that's in the first year of their roles. I think maybe we've got two that aren't. And so one of the risks that we take with two brand-new people in these positions is that we have more risk in violating open meeting laws or violating policies or even not understanding what needs to happen in agenda creation. So I'm trying to understand what we're going to do different so we don't end up in these situations or how we're going to get some experience and expertise into the conversation.
Chairman Kofelt, Trustee Johnson, I appreciate that question. No, I feel very comfortable moving forward. The recognition of the open meeting law violation was done in accordance with full transparency, making sure that if there was any question, that we would just go ahead and start this process again to make sure that there was no question. I think the specifics of that open meeting law, I agree with Chairman Kofelt. Anyone can read about that and go through the specifics and kind of judge for themselves what they think went on there. But for myself, I feel very confident and comfortable with this position and actually with what's transpired already. I feel very comfortable moving forward.
Trustee Johnson, I'll elaborate a little bit on that, too. And I think in our motion tonight, in the verbiage that was used was to acknowledge the perceived open meeting law. It doesn't mean there was an open meeting law, but there is a perception of an open meeting law. And so to do our due diligence and to make sure that we're being transparent, I think the responsible thing for us to do this evening was to say there was a perceived one, so let's acknowledge it, let's rectify it, so that going forward, our actions aren't brought into question because of a dispute over was there or was there not an open meeting law. And you're right, we had training on this last session from our attorney, Amy White, and these can be very gray language items. And even when we're doing our very, very best, there can be perceptions of things. You know, I take back to my very first meeting on this Board, I believe the Board dealt with an open meeting violation or a perceived one, and they self-declared for that one also to rectify it. And there was a fair amount of history of people on the Board there. So it can happen. You know, to go specifically to your point about what are we going to do differently, I think continue training. Being in front of, learning, educating ourselves, ISB training, training with our attorney, doing everything that we can to make sure that we are doing the people's business in a transparent and responsible way. That's my commitment as Chair. I will probably make, hopefully, never an open meeting law violation, but I'm sure I will make mistakes along the way that I will openly identify if I do make one, and I'll learn from it and try to move on from there. But yeah, that's all.
Thank you. I think that's what I was looking for, was kind of just an acknowledgement that maybe we need a little additional training and conversation and also probably some more conversation as a Board around kind of just different operations to make sure we're all on the same page.
I think one of the things that's important to point out here also is that, you know, two of the individuals that were identified in this open meeting violation were not sworn-in members of the Board yet. And therefore, they really were unable to violate an open meeting law because they weren't sworn trustees. But being as transparent as we can, I'm glad that the Board took the action to not say, hey, it doesn't apply. We recognize there was a perceived violation and we took action to rectify it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're all sworn in now, so it's game on. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for Vice Chair for Trustee Frazier. And do we have...
No, sorry.
Okay, no, that's right. Any other nominations? No? Okay. Any further discussion? No? Okay, we'll vote. Trustee Redford?
Aye.
Trustee Ozuna?
Nay.
Trustee Johnson?
Nay.
Chair, aye. Trustee Frazier?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes 3-2. The next item up is our discussion for the district's COVID-19 update, and Dr. Bub is going to give us an update on the safe return to in-person... I'm sorry, he's going to give us an update on West State's current COVID-19 policies and protocols. Dr. Bub.
Chairman, I'm sorry, we were going to do patron input first.
That is correct. Thank you.
I love these pop quizzes you give me.
Yeah, yeah. I was testing. I was testing. Yeah, no. As we mentioned at our meeting last week, and we're still working on it with our attorney, but public comment is important to us. We received numerous electronic comments from our patrons over the last week, and we've also received many, many emails. And so another avenue by which to hear from those of you that we serve is from public comment. We're still fine-tuning how that public comment will exactly occur, but for tonight, it was important to allow public comment on only the COVID-19 policies and procedures piece of the agenda. We have allotted 30 minutes for those comments, and we're allowing two minutes per patron who chooses to get up, and I will...
And I will call you from the list. Based on the list I have, I think we'll have the opportunity to let everybody speak tonight, which is great. I would just say as kind of ground rules moving forward is everyone's opinion is important and whoever is up there speaking should be respected. So I ask that we refrain from applause and support or showing our unsupport for a person's position. As we've done in the past, if you want to identify as supporting that position, you can always, you know, raise your hands or do something in a quiet nature so that the Board can recognize you support that. But to allow us to move along efficiently and to be respectful of each person's opinion, I ask that, you know, you let an individual speak, not interrupt them so that we can get through everybody. So with that being said, we will open the patron input portion of this meeting. And the first person that I have on the list is Amy Pitt. Good evening.
Good evening, hi. My first time speaking, so I'm a little nervous. My name is Amy Pitt. I'm the mother of three children, two of which are West Ada students. I'm here today to speak about the current COVID guidelines. I think they need to stay the way they are. In a normal world, we have cold and flu season. And it's normal for staff and students. They're going to be out. There's just been so much in our media that has turned this whole pandemic into a pandemic of fear. This type of fear tactic needs to end, and it needs to end on a local level. In fact, the other day, I was stunned to read an article published by Idaho Press saying that the West Ada Teachers Association said that in order for the district to stay open, we should consider implementing strategies such as universal masking, vaccination, and consistent testing of students and staff. To that, I say, they need to stay in their lane. These are the same people that came to this meeting last year thinking our children were going to cause death to them despite their choice to get vaccinated, to wear multiple masks, to get more vaccinations. That was their choice. Our choice was for our children to have a choice if they wanted to wear a mask, if they wanted to get vaccinated. This has worked out wonderfully. I have a child who has hearing loss. He has one useful ear and he has an exemption. But being able to hear his teacher and to be able to hear his classmates without the muffled sounds of masks is amazing. Seeing classmates' faces for the first time. Some of these little kids, the last couple of months has probably been the first time that they've seen a face of their friend or a face of their teacher. I just ask that you please do not go back to mandatory masking. It doesn't work and it would be a massive step backwards for West Ada. I truly believe that parents and students and staff all deserve a choice. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a clarification for the Board too. Since this is a specific agenda item, if you have a clarifying question for someone that's speaking, you know, be recognized by the Chair and we can do that. The intent is really to hear from the public, but if you need clarification on a comment that's made, we can do that this evening. Next up is Ms. Beckman. Welcome. And if you can just state your name and your address. Yes, I know. And I forgot to ask her. I have her address here. I will do that for the rest of them, yeah.
Really?
It's the same that we do on our electronic forums, people making comments.
I just find it a little concerning. Like, couldn't you have her come back up and state it for the record publicly?
We can do that, sure.
So, my name is Amy Pitt. I live at 910 North Cottage Cove Way in Starr, Idaho. And I am a West Ada parent with two West Ada children.
Ms. Beckman, if, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Pitt. If it would be easier and we, going forward this evening, we can just say, what is your connection to West Ada and your zone if you feel better not leaving, putting your address out there?
Sure, you probably should have said that before you had her come back up here, though.
I sensed she didn't mind, so.
Okay, my name is Anita Beckman. I am a West Ada parent. I have two kids within the district and two that are not. We are currently back in a crisis standards of care within our community at large because of this new surge. We are also in crisis standards of care in our school district because of COVID-19 cases as well as staff shortages. The services you are providing are degraded and by no fault of its teachers, administrators, or support staff. It is degraded because of the lack of leadership in implementing a specific COVID-19 mitigating protocol or in fact, any other new mitigating measures that could have helped prevent our current state of dysfunction. The district has been so stubbornly bent on going down the path of least resistance that I have to ask, have you even considered the impact on education? Staff are so stretched thin to cover the demand and what you are providing in some cases is no longer considered education and might as well be daycare. The current protocol, sorry, having a mask policy with an opt-out is not effective in combating either student or staff absences. How can you say that you are focused on education when there is a substantial amount of student faculty absences which is greatly affecting learning loss? The mitigating measure to either wear a mask or not shouldn't be the only mitigating measure up for discussion. Has anyone even looked at the Idaho Office of School Safety and Security and implemented any other measures? Because from what I am witnessing as a parent, it does not appear to be. The fact is, the plan of doing the bare minimum is exactly why we are in this mess. I am asking that you implement a building-wide mask policy with no opt-out as well as some of the other mitigating measures suggested by the Idaho Office of School Safety and Security to get us out of this surge. And before I hear that masks do not work, there are two contexts. One is a filter and one is a barrier. I am for the one as a barrier in preventing saliva. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
On the, it's the first time we've heard the Office of School Safety and Security has recommendations. I don't think we've ever heard that before. Is there specific measures in there that you support?
There are.
That you can share with us?
There are quite a few. If you do not want to implement a mask policy, I am fine with that. Well, I'm not fine with it, but I am fine as long as you implement other measures. Some of them are staggering arrival and departure times, which is not currently happening at all, or at my children's school. It's just a free-for-all out there. That would be severely beneficial. The other is to limit gatherings. Like, we are in a surge right now. If you don't want to implement mask policies, then consider not having fans at sporting events or other events that are happening. There's a whole list of other recommendations on their site like temperature checks in the morning and in the afternoons, which would be extremely beneficial. There's some other ones as well. I urge you guys to look at those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Mr. Perez. And just to reiterate, Mr. Perez, just your association with the school district.
Thank you Chairman Kofelt, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Bub. My name is Sam Perez. I'm the WAEA president. And I'd like to say, we hold to the mitigation practices against COVID-19 throughout the West Ada School District. Here are some suggestions that perhaps can help with learning what effect it's had. We'd like to ask to have leadership, please explain and educate the COVID data process of the dashboard to all staff and stakeholders and how information is disseminated when making job site decisions. Secondly, share daily staff absences of all certified, classified, and students per school on the dashboard. Remember, all teachers are expected to teach asynchronously if the student has gone for any reason. Three, let the community, continue to let the community know how dedicated all our school staff have been to keep the schools open. Even our district office staff has sub in schools. Next, send out a district-wide survey asking all employees their thoughts about COVID-19 protections, how we currently cover classes, and of their current morale. The members of the West Ada School District believe that in-person learning is extremely important for our students. We recently took a survey of 520 WAEA members. Almost 31% of them knew of a loved one who died of COVID-19 or COVID-related illnesses. 33% said they had contracted COVID-19 and 13% said they may have gotten it, which is around 46% or 242 that took part in the survey. We found that 93% knew of a friend or family member who had COVID. Ladies and gentlemen, we all want our kids in school, but we also want to be safe. The first time I had addressed the Board, my uncle, Vietnam veteran, died of COVID. I don't want that to happen to anyone else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Next is Ms. Sabori. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Megan Sabori. I am a parent of three kids in our West Ada schools. I have one in middle school and two in elementary. And I'm also a substitute teacher for West Ada. I primarily sub at my children's elementary school, so this is basically where I'm going to be speaking from. I didn't prepare anything, but I just kind of wanted to give you guys an idea of what's going on on the inside. I have subbed for teachers that are vaccinated, boosted, and wear double masks, and they have gotten COVID. I have subbed for teachers who don't wear masks at all. They have gotten COVID. I've substituted for teachers who need a vacation and have not been sick, but they've needed a vacation. My fifth grader came home the other day and said, Mom, you'd be so proud of my class. We were given our work to do. We got to work on it by ourselves while our teacher went and taught across the hall at another fifth grade classroom because there was not a substitute for that classroom. And they were left basically, I mean, they weren't unattended. People were walking by, the other teachers were checking on them. But the teachers are getting by and they're doing it and they're saying, this is going to be over because what we said two years ago, everyone's going to get it eventually and we all need to just get through it together. So there are other teachers that have been teamsing in to their other rooms in the building. My son stayed home last Friday because he had a little cough. He was perfectly fine, but I had him stay home. He was able to teams in. His teacher emailed him and said, teams in at 10:30. They are making it work. They are doing it. Thank you guys so much for giving that extra incentive for substitutes. I've been recruiting like crazy to get everybody in there. You have an hour. Come in and sub. Okay, so thank you guys, parents. Don't take advantage of this. Don't pull your kid out of school for two weeks to go on vacation and expect your teacher to do all the work and get you a packet. Get your kids to school when they're healthy. Keep them home when they're not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Evans, Shiloh Evans. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Shiloh Evans. I'm a parent of West Ada students in Zone 1. When we are aware that these COVID surges will be happening, we need to be putting mitigation strategies into place such as surveillance testing, symptom checks, mask mandates, close contact tracing, because the lack of mitigations in the school districts have resulted in special education paras and Title 1 paras, substitute teaching, instead of working with the students who are the most vulnerable to these upheavals that occur in the schools. SSAs and counselors are similarly unavailable to support the children who need it most. Everyone around here are talking about struggles at, mental health struggles of the children, yet we're impeding them from getting the support they need by taking these counselors away from them. Multiple classes are being crammed into a single space for a study hall. For some students, these are their entire day or almost entirety of their current education is the study hall days. And teachers are juggling their time between virtual, in-person, and catching up those who just came back. And none of this allows for quality education. There's plenty West Ada could have done, should have done, and still can do about it. We need to bring in real and actual mitigation and prevention measures that are shown to make an impact in COVID spread. You are West Ada School Board trustees, which means you are responsible for ensuring a functioning school district, which can actually prepare today's students for tomorrow's challenges. You are failing in your duty to remember that as outlined in the Board's Code of Ethics. Your first and greatest concern is the educational welfare of the students attending public schools. COVID is here to stay. It's time to put a plan in place that works. It's time to mandate masks and other mitigations whenever the experts predict a surge in order to prevent students' education from being so significantly disrupted every time a new variant comes along. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Benetti. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is David Benetti. I represent 4,000 parents of the West Ada Parents Association. They have two children within the district. And I'm just going to state what I think is perfectly obvious to everyone by now. There's nothing that this Board can do that will stop what is fundamentally unstoppable. COVID is going to happen. It's going to happen no matter what we do. And the focus that we need to have is not on the things that we can't control, but things that we can. And what a Board can control as the Board of Education is the education of our kids. And so if we can continue to support the superintendent, the superintendent's lieutenants, who are coming up with creative solutions for that in terms of substituting, the staffing shortages are real. The case counts are real. The crisis standards of care are real. But we have to understand the things that we can control and the things that we simply can't. No one can. No one can, and we all know it. We wish it were different. We wish that a school Board could take an action that would arrest this terrible virus and stop it in its tracks. But it's simply not possible. So please, I simply ask you, focus on the things that you can control, the education of our kids. Support our superintendent. Let him do his job. Let our vice superintendent, in terms of human resources, help him do his job. And let's get back to the focus on educating our kids. Thank you.
Trustee Johnson, follow?
Yeah, clarifying question. I want to clarify on the education of kids because I think that's the piece that at least I'm concerned about.
Sure.
So when we, when you say the education of kids, what do you mean when you think about kids or staff? Like Ms. Sabori just testified to, kids in a classroom with no teacher to actually teach them and a teacher working back and forth? How do you think that education of kids is happening in that scenario? What do you think about that?
So the point is, what can you do to stop that? As a school Board? What can you do to stop that? I'm not suggesting that it isn't real. But what I'm seeing in the education of my kids are now back to normal school. Learning, socializing, smiling, the biggest smile I've seen in years. And those are the things that we can control. There's nothing this school Board can do that will stop COVID. I wish you were, I wish you could. I really wish you could. I wish our doctors could. I wish, I wish anything that could. But we can't. So we have to simply acknowledge that and focus our energy and our attention and our time not on being public health experts, but public education experts. So let's just do what we can. And that we can control. Did that answer your question?
I think so.
Good.
I just want to know where you're at.
Thank you.
I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Next is Ms. Laird. Welcome.
I am a parent of one out of two children in West Ada in District 4. I really want to thank you for canceling mask mandates. I saw dramatic change in my daughter's academic achievements, achievements, behavior, happiness, and overall communication with me as her parent. But to get started, I'm here to ask you to drop all COVID protocols. You're the Board of Education. You're not the Board of Blue Cross. Let me remind you that your job is not to count COVID cases. Your job is to improve education in our district. Yes, there are lots of absences in school right now, but once they all are done and returned, we're going to have so many students and staff members with natural immunity, with the best immunity out there. I am not advocating against masks. I'm not advocating against vaccines. I'm asking the Board of Education to stop medical decisions on behalf of the parents. None of the parents want to see their children hurting or dying or having anything horrible to them. We all wish the best in this world to our children, so we can decide what's the best for our children. If I feel that mask will protect my student, I will provide it for her. If I feel that vaccine will be effective for her, I'll vaccinate her, but I do not need you to tell me what I need to do. I will make their choice the best I can. So drop all the COVID protocols. They divide our community. My daughter was shamed for not wearing a mask. She was asked to sit on the corner in one of her classes, and she was not able to participate in her math group activities during the group projects. So those protocols were against my child. I want to, to all of those who wish to mask and vaccinate, I will respect your choice, and I want you to respect mine. And I want to finish with my favorite quote, "The real tragedy of life is not when kids are afraid of the dark. It's when the adults are afraid to see that light."
Thank you. Next is Mr. Nielsen. Welcome.
Thank you, School Board. Dr. Bub, glad to be with you here today. My name is Travis Nielsen. I'm a parent of three kids in West Ada, two at Rocky and one at Heritage. So as a parent, I know that happiness is key to my children's emotional health. They need to smile. They need to see each other's smiles. They need to see other people smile. They need to see facial expressions. It is part of a meaningful learning experience. My kids are also soft-spoken. Others cannot hear them when they have a mask on. With masks on, they stopped talking and it broke my heart. The last two years, they have not been able to see many smiles while they're at school. Fortunately, the forced mask mandate was rescinded two months ago. Since then, my kids are happier to go to school. My kids need to continue to see others' faces. They get depressed when they are forced to wear a mask. They cannot stand masks, just like almost all other kids on the planet. It is pointless to debate whether masks work. Everybody has already decided for themselves. While I firmly believe masks do nothing to stop or slow the spread of COVID, I also respect others' choice to mask if they want. But today, I'm happy. I know that voters have spoken for parents' choice, and I much appreciate the service of our new board members, who will listen to parents and respect parents' choice. Please keep masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, and I don't want to mess up the last name, Jennifer, is it?
Frohrer.
Frohrer? Thank you for the help. That's all right. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for taking comments again. My name is Jennifer Frohrer. I'm from Zone 5. I have a kindergartner and a second grader this year, as well as two more children at home. Two years ago, when my eldest started kindergarten, the policy for missing school due to illness was that children should only be kept home if they have a fever or vomiting, and then after 24 hours breaking that fever or not vomiting, the child could go back to school. In fact, I remember being told that if my child will stay home when they have the sniffles or cough, my child would miss too much valuable instruction time. Kids just get sick. Now, if my child has anything other than perfect health, including allergies or a stomach ache, since coronavirus includes all of those symptoms, then my child has to stay out of school for at least 72 hours after their symptoms improve and are required to test after that 72 hours, which frequently means a fourth day of school is missed while I wait on test results or the ability to get a test. This was really terrible in December when the district testing, which was promised five days a week in two locations, was down to three days a week in one location. There's no reason for this policy to be different from two years ago, and for that to be different now tells me that my child's learning, which was so important then, is not important to the school district anymore, and there's literally no sense to wait 72 hours after symptoms and then a test when testing could be done during those 72 hours in order to get my kid back to school sooner. Because of the insane rules that have been in place, I've heard secretaries in school no longer want to know if your child's out sick, so you don't need to wait that 72 hours. At the end of first term, I talked to the principal of my school because I had not been following the rules to a T, and he kind of chewed me out for it and said, "I think you'll be surprised at how little school your child will miss if you follow those rules." Well, two months later, my children, at least one of my children, was home with me for half of that time. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do not have anybody else on the list, and for the 30 minutes, we have five minutes left. If there's anyone else that would like to speak, you're welcome to come up and be recognized.
My name is Lane Bingham. I have a child that goes to Meridian Elementary. I told my daughter that I would fight for her. These masks are pointless. They don't work. I sent her to school with a mesh mask. You can see right through it. Nobody said a word. Obviously, this has got nothing to do with the sickness. We know that it's real. We know everybody's going to get it. But as far as all, it's not a secret anymore that this is, it was planned on us. It was given to us, and the only way that we can combat this is to just stay home if you're sick. If you're not, go home. But we're in the wintertime. I've got sniffles. Everybody gets sniffles. It's winter. It's called flu season. There's a reason why. Nobody talks about the nutrition that we put in these kids. It's garbage. That's why we get sick all the time is because of the garbage that we put in our kids. It's not healthy for them. They need to be able to see smiles. 90% of communication is nonverbal. If you put a mask on these kids' faces, they can't see their teachers being proud of them, being excited for them when they get a right answer. These little kids, when you have a mask on their face and they try to talk, they already have little voices anyway, and then you can't hear them through the masks, so they don't speak anymore. They just stop. They shut down. Masks have been put on people's faces for thousands of years, and it's not to protect them for anything. It's to push them down, knock them down, make them compliant. We all know this. It's not a secret anymore. We aren't just weird, crazy people with tinfoil hats on our heads. All these conspiracy theories, guess what? They're all coming true, and it's people above us that are a tyrannical government coming after us. We gave them the money, and they built the virus and put it on us. We need to stop vaccine mandates. Moderna's coming out through the CDC saying that it's causing enlarged hearts. What happens when your heart enlarges? You die. I have two friends that are dead now because of the vaccine. It's your choice. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we would have time for one more if there's someone that would like to speak.
Hi, my name's Carmy Scheller. I teach at Star, live in Eagle. My kids are graduates. This is my 32nd year teaching. I've been through a lot of different things. Last year at this time, most of my kids had been in school from November until now, every day, almost every day, all kids. Yes, they were wearing masks, but they were there almost every day. We're at 87 or 88 days. I did the numbers Friday, so it's probably 88 today. I've had two days with my entire class in, only two, all year, since the beginning of the school year. When I looked at how many absences total, we have 198 absences, and that wasn't including the five today. They're not all medical. There are vacations, there are appointments, there are all kinds of things that we always have every year. The numbers have trended way more than they've ever been before this year. The only other time I saw absences like this was January to March of 2020. We came back in January, and I never saw my whole class, and I had 36 kids at the time. So we spread illness really effectively in that room, and I haven't seen anything like it. So I want them all there. We're making great growth, but it is really challenging, and it is breaking teachers right and left. It is breaking our support staff right and left. We need relief, and I don't think anybody can give it. We are where we are. We'll do what we do. The divisiveness, the polarization is probably the worst thing that's happening to any of us, and that's going to last a lot longer than COVID.
Real quick, could you just spell your name for me, just so I get it for the sign-in sheet?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, trustee Johnson.
Can you just give us an insight? Because I think, I think when you hear that many absences, it's kind of a staggering piece, right? And then you also hear, and I feel it too, like, what do you do, right? So from your standpoint, what are some options the board should consider around how do we keep the education quality at the level that we can?
That's really hard because we're a big system, and the answer for a kindergarten classroom is completely different to the answer for a high school classroom. And as a fourth-grade teacher, I can look at, sorry, I really need my train. I can look at the priorities for my grade level and decide what do I focus on, what's critical. And I have the whole year with the same kids, and thank you so much. And I have the ability to hone in and say, okay, they've got to be able to compute and solve problems. They've got to be able to read, and they've got to be able to understand what they read, and we can hone in on what's most critical and then expand where we can. You know, they're all levels all the time. But when I have a high school class that's a semester-long class, and kids aren't even there the first day to meet me, and then have to go in, that's a different animal. And then you think about high school and all the different kinds of classes there are. It's a really, I don't envy your position. All along through this whole entire mess, I think that those people who are making decisions are in the worst position of anybody because you are damned if you do and damned if you don't, that you just can't find the right answer. I think that understanding that the pressure to have everyone at the place that we normally would expect them to be in every room and every is an impossible task, and for those educators in this district, which is everyone, I know so many that are very professional and take their job very, very, very seriously, and the education of the child and the care of the child, and the pressure that we put on ourselves to get them all there is pretty high, and COVID's undermining that. So you go in every day trying to get everybody as far as you can, and then your feet are getting knocked out from under you constantly. I think just understanding and continuing to do what you can to support and to encourage families that when your kid is sick, stay home. Yeah, the numbers, the days, all that, it's just constantly changing and hard to track and hard to know, but you know, that is probably the number one thing, is don't spread when you can avoid spreading. And I'm not using COVID specifically because it's any illness. You know, everything travels like that. We can't distance in classrooms, never have been able to, never will be able to. Kids don't. They talk this close to each other. So just, you know, do the best you can, and, sorry, I wish I had a magic. Believe me, if I did, I would have sent it to you already.
Thank you. That will close our patron input portion of the agenda. Thank you for everyone's comments and being here tonight. The next item is we'll move into our discussion portion of the agenda, and we'll start with a district COVID-19 update from our superintendent, Dr. Bub.
Chair Kofeld, thank you very much. I'm going to kind of, I'll start out with some historical context for everybody, not because I want to bore anybody or put them to sleep, but I think it's important as part of this discussion with two new board members. See if I can get Signal Troy to start my PowerPoint here. Maybe not. Okay, there it is. All right. So just from a timeline standpoint, and this by no means is everything that has been addressed or that has been done, but some important dates. December 8th was when we worked with some doctors, December 8th of 2020, worked with some local physicians to develop what was kind of the beginning of our pandemic operations plan, and that was approved by the board on December 8th. February 9th, 2021, was when the return to full-time in-person learning was approved. On May 11th, 2021, mask optional, effective at the end of the school year, was approved. June 15th, 2021, a pandemic operational plan update was approved. And on November 15th, and this is kind of where we're living right now, I put these two items on there, November 15th, mask optional was approved, and on January 7th, the quarantine policy was changed to represent five days in alignment with CDC. Some of the things that we look at, I get questions all the time, what are the things that we look at? One, I will tell you that we look at is what is the impact of the virus on the community? I'm just going to, if you haven't looked at the newspaper, and this isn't to throw anybody under the bus, but CDH currently tells us they're about 35,000 cases behind, and they do not have a representative of when, or an idea of when they're going to be able to have those cases updated. Overall impact on West Ada School District, we look at our COVID dashboard, what are our cases per 100,000, number of positive cases infectious at school, and I'm going to get into the COVID dashboard in just a second, but these are the things that we look at. Quarantine rates for students and staff with absences, understanding of the current variant, exposure risk. We're not really, we are not contact tracing within our classrooms right now, so that exposure risk is smaller. That was really focused around when we were contact tracing and quarantining students for being in exposure in class. And then case surveillance, distinct outbreaks, clusters. Are we seeing certain programs? We continue to go down that road. Data review, and again, I'll get into the dashboard in just a second, but just culmination of the numbers that we've seen, January 2nd through January 8th, we saw 643 cases. That's about 1.4%. January 9th through January 15th, we saw 975 cases. That's at 2.2%. And then January 16th, January through January 22nd, we saw 271 cases. I want to just put a little asterisk there. We expect this number to increase due to reporting. If a kid reports today that they were infectious at school last week, they just tested positive today. We put it on last week, so that's our most up-to-date. That way, we know how many numbers, and we're going to get into that in a second on why we do that, but that's really important to us. Similar districts in Idaho, I've had some questions about how we haven't been able to, why we haven't had to shut things down. Looking at similar districts in Idaho, we've seen people operate with over 3% positivity. I think one of the advantages of having a bigger districts is we do have the personnel to be able to shift to schools that need that personnel. It hasn't been perfect, and I appreciate some of the comments. It hasn't been perfect. I had the unique challenge to be able to substitute, so for those people who substitute for us, thank you very much. I subbed twice this week, this past week, and I love being around the kids, so that's the occupation I choose, but it was, and I can tell you firsthand, it's not perfect, but it was, I think that our staff, and I'll get into the staff in a second, but I think our staff are doing a tremendous job making it work for our kids regardless of what the cases look like. Cases are reported, I'm sorry, sorry. Yep, nope, that was, nope. Cases are reported on the date of infectious onset for students and staff. Today, for example, and I think this is important, we had 100 cases reported at noon. We probably had more cases, but we had, remember, we just had a weekend, so when people come in on Monday, we had these 100 cases reported. 71%, we're within that five days. You'll see them up on the dashboard. They're there. 29% were outside of that five days, meaning a kid could come to us and say, "Hey, by the way, we just got these test results because labs are backdated. Hey, we just got these lab results. I was positive. I stayed home. I did everything I was supposed to do, but I was positive a week and a half ago." Well, and we hear all the time, "Well, that didn't go on the dashboard." It's not going to. It was a week and a half ago. So that's why that doesn't happen. All right. Student attendance, and I put this up here because I've heard, again, I'm trying to address concerns that I've heard, that our classes are empty. In 2021, January of '21, we were at about 93% attendance. January of '22, so far, we sat at about 86% attendance. Staff attendance is another one that I think I'd like to address. October 5th through October 8th of this year, we sat at about 95%, 95%, 94%, 91% attendance. January 18th through the 21st, staff attendance, we sat at about 90%, 89%, 89%, 89%. Currently, we have about 220 subs that take jobs every day. That doesn't mean that's how many subs that are in the system. That's about how many subs take jobs every day. We can function pretty easily when we're at that 90% or above attendance rate. When it gets below that, then the superintendent goes out and substitutes classes, and I'll get into that, but our staff here at the district office, from our instructional coaches, our curriculum coaches, our classified staff have been all hands on deck because we all have this collective belief that it's really important we keep schools open, and they're the safest place for our kids to learn. Okay, what have we learned? Well, I just said it, so maybe that was a little precursor to this, but schools are the safest place for most of our students to learn. We truly believe in in-person. are the safest place for most of our students to learn. We truly believe in in-person learning, we want to keep our schools open. The value of a teacher in front of those kids, and whether that be the superintendent, or whether that be our instructional coaches, or that be a substitute, is really, really important for our kids. We truly believe that. We also have real mental health concerns with our kids. We want our kids to feel a normal, every single, a normal environment every single day, and keeping schools open is a big part of that. Closing a school creates a whole new set of challenges, and I think there's a lot of people that have said, well, if you close schools, and this isn't to cast judgment on some places that have done this, but for us, when we close a school, it's a daycare issue, it also becomes a workforce issue. And now mom and dad, and I think that we really need to think about this, and now mom and dad, or mom or dad, is staying home with their kid because the school closed, although they're healthy, and then two weeks later, the kid's not feeling good, mom and dad, mom or dad are gonna either have to stay home again, or they're gonna send their kid to school sick. And so, in the efforts to try to maintain our schools, that becomes another big concern when we try to close schools. The value of in-person learning is difficult to temporarily replace. Listen, shifting into a remote learning environment, we have proven is really, really difficult. Teachers that are really effective at it will even say, they really had to work hard at doing that. Virtual Schoolhouse, our teachers that are teaching virtual Schoolhouse, one of our teachers of the month this last month, I got to sit and watch him deliver instruction, he was doing a phenomenal job. That's what he does every single day. We're not changing his environment, it's what he does every single day. In preparation for snow days, in preparation for any shutdowns that we may have, we did do a remote education test on January 17th. We are going through the results of that test to make sure that, and we're addressing that test with, and we really did that K through 5. Our secondary and our high schools, all of our secondary schools, those kids use their laptops a lot more often. We conducted two tests, one was in school to make sure the laptops were updated for our elementary skids. We did that the week we got back. The second test was January 17th, and the goal of that was for kids to take their laptops home and try to engage in online learning from home. School operations, our goal is to maintain an operationally sound environment that provides students an opportunity to engage in incredible in-person learning opportunities. This is our overall arching goal. We want our schools to be open, we want our kids to continue to learn from our teachers face-to-face. We look daily at our student attendance counts, we look daily at staffing. We have a plan here at the district office, we meet every single morning for an operational meeting at the district office to talk about schools that need extra support. We look at classified, we have classified staff that we can deploy to schools. We look at certificated individuals, that means our instructional coaches, our curriculum coaches, we are able to deploy them. Administered, from an administrative standpoint, we are able to deploy administrators. If an elementary school loses their principal because their principal is test positive, we need to supply, we need to provide some support with that. And that's what we meet about every single morning. We pull up the dashboard, we pull up our sub list, and we look at that. Okay, what does it look like in schools? And I think this is important for everybody to understand. Number one, I just said, we have a daily standing operational meeting to review our vulnerable areas. Regional directors, then, for areas that we've identified as being vulnerable, our regional directors work with ability administrators to say, hey, what kind of support do you guys need? What can you shift around? What do you need for us to shift around? At the elementary school, and I think it was said a little bit earlier, elementary school looks a little bit different than secondary does. At the elementary school, we temporarily suspend special programs, and that means things like PE class, that PE teacher now becomes a first-grade teacher. So if we don't have a sub for a first-grade class, we ask all the teachers to teach through their prep, which was one of the reasons for our compensation. We see, we ask our teachers to teach through their prep, and that PE teacher now becomes a first-grade teacher. It's a certified teacher that is willing to go in the classroom. That's a lot on our teachers. I don't want that to be mistaken as, hey, that's all they do, it's no big deal. I'm gonna tell you, if you're teaching PE every single day and you're planning for what that looks like, and all of a sudden, oh, by the way, today, you're teaching first grade, that's a lot on a teacher. And when it's every single day, that, those are challenges. But I have a ton of confidence in the people that we have there. We will deploy, we have a list of district instructional and curriculum staff, this is our number-one priority. This is more important than any instructional work we're doing on the backend, this is more important than any curriculum work we're doing on the backend, we want to keep our schools open. Immediately, we're able to offer administrative assistance. Thank you to our regional directors who work really, really hard to get in contact with all of those schools and make sure that they feel supported, and whatever they need, all hands on deck. And then last, but definitely not least, our classified staff are utilized on an as-needed basis. Some of our classified staff work in pairs, work as pairs every single day in the classroom, and are able to, they already have the students, they have relationships with students, they're able to slide in and take over, and they do a tremendous job for us. Secondary looks a little bit different. Secondary, I will tell you, coming from a secondary world, this is an area that I have learned, elementary world is something that I've really worked hard to learn. Secondary world makes it a little bit easier because I can, because what you can do at the secondary level is if you have a teacher out, you can put a teacher in there, and then teach during their prep. That is easier for us to attack from a manpower issue, but I'm gonna tell you, that's not easier on our teachers. Teachers teaching all day long is really, really difficult. So when people ask, why are teachers drained? Because they are working, they are burning the midnight oil trying to get their job done. They have done a tremendous job. They continue to impress me. I was able to hit a lot of campuses this week, and the work that our teachers are doing, they are not celebrated enough for what they do. Administrative assistance, again, we can, we will deploy administrators to help out at our secondary level, and then classified coverage. Okay, Operation It Takes a Village, this was really important, and I will just tell you, this is the life we live. This came up, as I was talking to staff, I really recognized that we have a lot of staff that are just doing everything they can to make sure the mission of our school district is completed, and it's not always celebrated, and it's not all the time that we can do this. So one of the things we want to do, I didn't want to just say, hey, you know what, we're gonna pay teachers a little bit more and put this extra pressure on our teachers, but what I wanted to do is come up with a system that we could put in temporarily as we're going through another surge, and what is something that we can do for our teachers right away, whether that be our classified staff, whether that be our certificated staff, or that is our subs. From a substitute standpoint, our first goal was, how do we increase the people that are subbing? Meaning this, if we have subs that are willing to work for us, if they're subbing, right now, we have subs that work one or two days a week. If this little incentive makes them work three to four to five days a week, then it works. We need to maximize the number of days that people are willing to sub for us. So if they work four days a week, we will give them one and a half times their daily rate of pay. If they work five days per week, we will give them two times their daily rate of pay. For our classified staff, a lot of times, and I'll use the secondary example, but I think it happens across the board, at the secondary level, we may have a para who works outside of their, outside of what they do every single day, and they're taking over a classroom. Well, nobody does their job when they stop, when they step into an English class and they take over that English class. Nobody comes in and says, oh, no problem, you don't have to do your job today. So they have work extra. So now, when I stopped at a secondary school, and it was 5:30 at night, and 5:30 at night, we have staff there that are working their tails off, making up for that lost time. We, I feel like it's our responsibility to celebrate that, and so we're willing to compensate them two times their daily, their rate of pay. For our contracted staff that are working through their preps, that's both elementary school, middle school, and secondary, our secondary schools, we're gonna up their pay to $50 per hour when they cover, when they work through their preps. A lot of people ask, well, what does that prep look like? Here's, it's that word right there, it's prep. It's preparing for the next lesson, for the next day. It used to be preparing for like the next week, now it's like the next 15 minutes because our teachers are overworked and doing the best they can. But, and that's really what it's for. So now, if you kind of work that out, if they're working through that prep, now they're probably staying late to make sure that that next day is taken care of. I have yet to meet the teacher that says, oh, you know what, it's no big deal, my job's done, I'm just gonna go home, and I don't need to prep for tomorrow. Our teachers are doing daily prep to make sure that their classroom is operating at a high level. Okay, now let's talk a little bit about dashboard. There's some things on the dashboard that I want to put out, and I really want to make sure that people understand where we're putting our cases. I took the time to look at several dashboards across the United States to see how people are reporting their numbers. We report our numbers on the day, from the day the student was infectious at school. That's a really important indicator for us because we know what our numbers look like on that day. If we report our numbers, if a kid comes in on Monday, let's say a kid goes out on Wednesday, and I'm gonna try to walk through this a little bit. If a kid goes out on Wednesday, and on Wednesday, that student says, you know, I'm not feeling good. He could take a PCR test, send it off to a lab, he may not get the results back till Monday. So now Monday, we get the results, well, that student's five days past. And so, we keep track of that, but that doesn't go on there because that Monday's case, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, that Monday's case, we want to know how many cases are active on Monday in our schools. It's really important for us to be able to use that for an operation, from an operational standpoint. There's other places that say, okay, well, the day we get the positive case, if we get a positive case on Monday, then that's an indication where we're at on Monday. No, if you get a positive case on Monday, sometimes that's an indication of where you were at last Wednesday. At the top of the dashboard, that's where we give our overall cases for the last five days. This is where we sit for the last five days. I got this earlier today, so please don't judge when you look at it. I don't know where it's at right now. But that's 123 through 119, that's the last five days of our data. If you look below, that gives the week's worth of data, 116 through 122, plus 116 through 122, plus 116 through 122. That's gonna give you the total cases for during that time. Those cases will increase, so today, we, I'm sure those cases increased because when a kid comes in today and says, I tested positive, I was at, or kid won't come in, sorry, when the parent calls and says, my kid tested positive, he was at school on Thursday and Friday, then we put it in the system for last week, so we get a true count of what last week looked like. If you look at, if you look at our numbers, our numbers will grow last week, take a snapshot, our numbers will grow last week, so we know what last week looked like. That's what trend line data looks like. If you got in a car accident today, you reported it to police on Thursday because it was a hit-and-run, you would not say, well, Thursday was the day of the accident, Monday is the day of the accident. That's why we do it that way. Next. Okay, some of the data discrepancies. What is the purpose of the dashboard? I think it's important for us to recognize what the purpose of the dashboard is. It's really to allow our stakeholders to see the level of positive cases infectious in our schools. I get all types of questions of, well, why aren't we putting our community numbers in there? Why, because the idea of the dashboard, CDH's job is to track the community numbers. Our, what we're trying to do is say, hey, this kid was infectious at school, this is how many kids we have infectious at school. We do not jump into CDH's territory when it comes to that. How do we get the data? Here's how we get the data. Parents report the data to the school nurse. The school nurse inputs it into a reporting form, and it's automatically uploaded in the dashboard. So when it ends up in there, we don't have our hands on it. It goes straight into the dashboard once the, once our nurses, who are another group of unsung heroes, they work their tails off to make sure that this is accurate. Now, are there areas where the data could be inaccurate? Yeah, absolutely. If a parent doesn't report a case, if they test at home, they don't report it, we have no way of knowing. Delay in testing results, as I went over just a second ago. If a parent, if there's a delay at the lab, and there's all types of delays right now, if there's a delay at the lab, we may not find out until day eight or day nine that there is a positive case. Or, we have kids that parents just don't test. And so, those are all options of where there could be some inaccuracies. But here's what I'll tell you, when we find out there is a positive case, and I want to make this really clear, when we find out there is a positive case, and they were infectious at school, it goes on the dashboard. Okay, that kind of sums up some of the items where we're at. I will tell you some of the areas of concern, we went through that operational piece. Some of the areas that I, somebody asked me the other day, and I think I'll just address it now publicly, well, what would be the area that you wouldn't be able to cover? I'm gonna tell you the area we wouldn't be able to cover. Busing would be really, really difficult for us. CDL, our commercial, people with the CDL are not, are not very common, and so busing would be our biggest concern. We don't, I can't, superintendent cannot drive a bus, so that's an area that would concern me the greatest. I would love to hear, in part of the board discussion, do we start looking at, what does an endemic plan look like? How do we, what does tomorrow look like? And I think that's something that we should start to consider. Vision for school operations, maybe our vision of, hey, let's keep schools open, and let's deploy people to make sure that our schools are still functioning when we have 85, 90% of our kids in school. I think 85 to 90% of our kids getting an education is really, really important. I would love to hear from the board on that, so I'm not working against the board. What is the superintendent's authority? I think we have board policy on what the superintendent's authority is with this, but I'd love to hear what the board feels on that. Data collection, where are we at with data collection? We get more critiques, it's really interesting to me how many critiques we get on our dashboard. When I look at it compared to anybody else, we may be too explanatory on our dashboard. Do we continue that road? When I look at the people that are professionals at this, and this is what they do, are 35,000 cases behind, I just received an email that said they didn't know, they have no plan on when they're gonna get caught up, and we're getting critiqued every day for our data is interesting. And then parent notifications, one of the things, I talked to a mom last week, and I think this is such an, this is such a wise comment, she said, Derek, my issue is that I'm getting parent notifications, I'm not even stressed out about this, but I'm getting so many parent notifications, I'm now stressed out about this. And I think that one thing that we haven't done a good job of explaining, and that's 100% on me, is especially in our secondary schools, a lot of our schools, if you have three classes with a student that tested positive, you're going to end up getting three notifications, because we send out a notification for every single class. At most of our schools, spoke with some principals today, some of our principals say, no, we wait till the end of the day, and we send one notification per student, and so, but for the vast majority, they end up with three notifications, although it was one case. The other thing that we don't explain in there is how close, we're not doing contact tracing. So we're not explaining, hey, this was six feet away, this kid was three feet away. Your kid may have been 24 feet away in the classrooms. And so, working through that and talking about what those notifications, and the last thing I would say I would want the board to consider on that is, when we talk about these notifications, we know that this virus spread in our community is very high. If your kids have symptoms, they've probably been exposed. I think it's really important for us to start thinking through that and saying, okay, well, are these notifications, are they, are they beneficial at this time? We have gotten medical advice on this, where they've spoken about, hey, this contact tracing is really, really important when the, when the spread is low. We're not at low spread right now, we're at high level of spread. So where do we see those parent notifications going? And then I'd love to hear on any other comments.
Thank you, Dr. Bub. I appreciate that, and the clarification, because I know I've been asked the question through emails and things also about why is a number not showing at a certain school? And then obviously, you know, we have a school district right next door to us that has remained in masks the entire time, and numbers look very different, and so that explanation was very, very helpful. Thank you. I'll open it up if there's any trustees that have follow-up questions or comments for Dr. Bub, I'll open the floor.
I have a question.
Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, can we talk a little bit, because actually, so let me first say, I got a couple things. First, I have a daughter getting ready to go to Leach here this weekend, so I'm wearing a mask to make sure, it's just total precaution. So I don't want anybody to think I have different policies just based on what I'm doing up here. I'm really just trying to make sure that we get to fly to Bellevue this weekend, and I'm taking every precaution I possibly can. Second, I love that I think that we're having this discussion now because it was good to hear the public comment, but I think we're at a different stage than we've been for the last year and a half. So- So, or two years, that guy feels like forever. But, because there's a couple of things that, since we created this pandemic plan, that have changed. So I'll tell you the ones that I can kind of remember. The first one is, so in the beginning, we were just trying to get kids back in school, but we also didn't have vaccines, or vaccine options. We had a, the virus has changed. So the virus severity, the spread, all of that's changed. So I think what I see is we've got some, a, a different type of virus hitting us right now. We're probably going to see something more like that in the future. And then, I guess what I've been more worried about is the absence rates, so, and the teachers. So in this time, which, a lot, in the previous conversations, it was, you know, how do we get kids back in school and then how do we keep them? Right now, we're trying to, we're really trying to keep them in school, and we're trying to keep enough teachers and qualified education going on. And so I have some questions around that, and I specifically have some questions around the quarantine policy, because that's not something that the board actually came back and approved. That's something that CDC and CDH came in. And my question around that is, are we, where are we at in like consideration with at-home tests and being, people being able to just prove, hey, my child took a negative test or we've got a negative test, can I come back in before the quarantine procedures are up, quarantine time? So where are we at on thinking through that?
Yeah. Chair Kofelt, trustee Johnson, I'm going to defer, as she stares at me with these, I can't believe you're going to defer to me. Tracy, would you mind touching base? Where are we at with at-home tests when, when somebody comes in with that, or what does that look like?
Do we accept at-home?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we accept at-home tests.
I think, and maybe it needs a little time to think through, so let me clarify the question, Mr. Chair. Is, so our, our quarantine procedures today, and you guys correct me if I don't understand them right, but is if you're vaccinated or, and you're asymptomatic, then you are required to wear a mask for 10 days, but you could come, you can be in school. If you are not vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, you have five-day at-home quarantine, and then if you come back with a negative test, you have five days required to wear a mask. Do I have that all right? So what are our quarantine policies today? That would be helpful to start with.
Good evening, everybody. The quarantine policy today as it stands is if you're positive and fully vaccinated, asymptomatic, you can just return to school. If you're not fully vaccinated or symptomatic, it's a five-day quarantine, and then you return on day six. There's no testing. Testing is preferred or recommended, but it's not required.
Yeah, can you repeat that? Because I believe, we just read something different in the protocols, so that's why I'm, that's different than what we saw online, so.
So it depends, so are you talking, because what, what you first read was an exposure, are you talking a positive case? Because they are different.
Yeah, I'm talking exposure. We don't have quarantine for anything else right now, so it's all, it's all exposure, and really, it's probably at-home exposure is more of what we're, because we're not talking, we're not even doing contract tracing for schools right now.
Will you do quarantine or isolate for positive cases?
Okay, let me give you a scenario. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Parent, at-home test positive. Child is at-home, exposed, asymptomatic, vaccinated or non-vaccinated. Walk through that scenario, because that's what I was reading in our policies.
Okay, okay. So an exposed. So each of the scenarios, so if, if you have an exposure and they're vaccinated, they don't have to, and they're asymptomatic, they don't quarantine. And I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going off the top of my head after numerous changes. If they're not fully vaccinated and/or symptomatic, thank you, they must quarantine for five days. If you receive a negative test, you may return on day six. Oh, so I'm reading to you the symptom policy, sorry. So yes, if you get a negative test, you return on day six. My apologies.
That's okay. Follow-up, because I think, so that, I was trying to get to that spot so I could ask this question, which is, when they return on day six, or if they are vaccinated and asymptomatic, they can return right away and wear a mask. Are, is there, and I guess what I'm looking for is, can we just use the negative test? Like, what's the value of having the mask after the negative test proves they don't have it? I guess that's, that's trying, what I'm trying to figure out. And can we start to think about how testing goes into our policies here, like on quarantine?
It's a great question. It's CDC and CDH's guidelines requesting the mask, and it might be when you test, and they're looking at false positives or false negatives, and why they test, or why they require the mask. It's, it's a CDC/CDH guideline, so I can't answer to you why they're request, or why they're requiring it. But I imagine it's when you're testing, and so that if you do develop symptoms in those last five days of your quarantine, there was a layer of protection.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair, and a little bit of a smart aleck comment. You mean it's not a Blue Cross policy? Sorry. I, I'd like to see if we can consider something around how testing could work into our quarantine procedures, because what we've had is some parents who have said, you know, my, I have a mask exemption, or my child has some other issues going on, and then they're coming into, they're getting caught in an exposure category, and the mask is becoming the problem for them getting back to school. And so if negative testing can help us in that regard, I guess I was hoping we could look at what that option might be.
Gotcha, okay.
Any, any other follow-up questions from trustees? For Dr. Bub? Or just comments in general? Trustee Ozuna?
All right, I'll jump in. First, I want to thank you for making sure that we had this on the agenda tonight. I don't think anybody really enjoys this conversation, but given where we're at, I think that it's really important. You know, we have increasing case counts, and we have really tough operational things that we need to talk about. We also have a new board, so it's time for us to have this conversation, so I appreciate that. In addition, I think it's a really great opportunity for us to celebrate our staff because they're working so incredibly hard, putting in extra time to support our kids. Things don't look the way that they looked three years ago. We all know that. But teachers are working harder than ever, and we need to cut them a little bit of slack. We need to remember to say thank you, and please try to not be so divisive. It's our staff that suffers through this, it's our kids that are suffering. So this conversation gives us an opportunity to just say thank you, and I appreciate you. I don't have the answers, I haven't had the answers this whole time, and even more so now. I'm a mask supporter, I always have been, you all know that. I've changed a little bit, depending on what the circumstances are. I can tell you, I'm going to dress the elephant in the room, right now, I don't know how I feel about masks. There are new studies out that are, that are very credible, that show cloth masks have less efficacy than they've had in the past against this new variant. So what do we do with that? There are some challenges to putting our kids in masks and putting our staff in masks. So if they're less effective than they were before, do we go back down that path? I struggle with that a little bit. I also know our neighboring district has very high case counts with a mask mandate. There are states throughout this country that have protocols in place that are tighter than Idaho, that have similar challenges to what West State is experiencing with a mask mandate in place. So what do we do as a board? Dr. Bub, I have a question for you, this will be directed to you, but, you know, throughout the pandemic, and especially early on, we had a task force that met very regularly. I wonder if it would be beneficial to bring back the task force in some fashion that includes, I don't know what the right, what that makeup needs to look like, but where we can get some people looking at that, where we can make decisions or help guide our decisions based on the changes that continue to come, working into the creation of an endemic plan like you have here. But, you know, we can address changes with CDC. We can address if we have a new variant. We can address what we're hearing from our community, what we're hearing from our staff. Do we need to make changes to the dashboard? I mean, it would be, I think if we could look at maybe this COVID task force again, we have a place to steer those things and get good input from our staff and our community and our medical community, would that be valuable to bring back? And maybe it's still in place, I should say that, too.
Chair Kofelt, trustee Ozuna, I think that we're probably speaking the same language when we start talking about the creation of an endemic plan. That really is, is kind of the, the next phase of this, and how do, how do we deal with some of these things? And I think trustee Johnson brought up some, some points to say, okay, how, how does this look? And how does, the perspective that a committee like that gives to us is, what does this look like in the schools? So we could absolutely, at the direction of the board, I'd be happy to help with that.
Any other comments? Trustee Frazier.
I have given this a tremendous amount of thought. As, as everyone in this room knows and is listening, I mean, I'm newly elected, and over the last several months have talked to hundreds of you, literally hundreds, about this issue. Obviously, the, the different variants, I mean, there are different parameters to that, and I understand that. In reading through every email that I, I have seen that's been sent to me, in reading through the dashboard and every single comment that was made there, I counted 87, if I have that right, it was interesting to read the different things going on, and, and there are different components to this. It isn't just about masks. I mean, I, I appreciate that there are very unique situations going on. To, to kind of chime in with trustee Ozuna said, this is a, it's a complicated situation for everybody. We had several people talk tonight about, you know, we wish we had a magic wand. We do. Everybody wishes that existed. We wish that there was a way to snap our fingers and end this, and we all, I think, can agree that that's not possible. So we have to look at what can we do moving forward? And I get that's why we're here. Numbers that she gave, I mean, talking about Boise, other things, they were all thoughts that I had. So I guess the thing I want to say is, I think freedom is the most important thing we need to talk about. I know that our teachers are strapped with what they're dealing with, and we need to support them as a community. As school board members, we can't sub. They actually won't let us. I don't know if everyone knows that. We can't be paid by the district. I have volunteered. I am willing to sub for free. I know there are others on this board that are willing to also. I'm asking the community, if you can sub, please do it. Please sign up. I know it's complicated, I know it's hard, I've, I've been through it. Please help. We need to support our teachers and support our schools. Part of freedom is being willing to help make freedom possible. I have talked to individuals that are, are very firm on both sides of masks, as I know we're all aware. I've talked to people that want no masks, that, that feel like teachers should not get to wear them, that their kids can't learn in those situations, and I disagree strongly with that. They have the right to wear masks, they have the right to feel safe, they have the right to make that choice for themselves, and I support that 100%. As do the individuals I've talked to that feel like they cannot wear masks, it's not right for them, it's not right for their emotional state. I've talked to individuals that have some pretty good reasons for that, and, and that has to be valued and protected as well. So I, I definitely feel like making sure that we have options for our parents, for our teachers, for our community is, is one of the most important things we consider as we discuss this issue tonight.
I usually, I'll try to wait till the end, so.
I don't know that there's really anything that I could add of significance to this conversation. I, I feel like I'm Bill Murray in Groundhog's Day, right? This is the same meeting that we've had, I don't know how many times over the last two years. The arguments don't change, the arguments are the same on both sides, nobody's mind is going to be changed. I noticed the director of Idaho Health and Welfare earlier today said this new variant is more contagious, it's a lot more contagious, but with lower percentages of cases ending up in the hospital. There's a list of countries just recently that have discontinued all COVID protocols, mask mandates, and, and vaccine mandates, which UK was the most recent, Ireland, and Scotland. We've got 24 states that are currently peaked and downtrend, trending down, so I'm, I'm guessing, you know, Idaho is pretty close to reaching their peak. I, I just, I think, my opinion is, I also, on the, the, what do you call it? Sorry, I'm getting, oh, exposure notifications, yes. I do question the exposure notifications, if they're doing more harm than good. I've, I've seen several emails come through where parents are just sheer, it's just sheer panic. I got an exposure notification, and I understand that, that fear, but are they getting that notification after the fact? If it was like a week before and they're, they're panicking when it's already over? Do you know what I mean? Am I correct on that? Or no?
Chair Kofelt, no, they're, they get them that same day. So we, we send those out the day of, the day we get notified. So, so let me clarify, if we're not notified of the positive case for a week later, that would be one thing, but there would be nobody exposed at that point. So, so it's, we don't go back, like, we had some tests that were two weeks old that we received today. We don't go back and notify those parents two weeks ago that your kids may have been exposed.
Okay, so if, if it's a suspected case, then you notify that same day, or only confirmed?
Just confirmed.
Okay. Okay, I still question the, the point of them, but we have other districts in the area, Middleton, Emmett, Melba, they haven't been doing this the entire time, mask mandates or, you know, tracking cases. So to me, my opinion is that it's time to just move forward, let's have some consistency. I think this variant is just going to burn itself out, it's fast and furious, and I don't know. It's just, it's time to, it's time to move forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make a few comments here, and first is, you know, I try to, every time we've dealt with this, and I've made my comments, I try to bring it back for me to a very practical sense, because we can all get lost in the data. We can find a study that supports our position, we can, there's abundance of data. So I try to bring it down to, what am I seeing? I'm seeing a world, a country, a state, a local communities where people are afraid. There, there's a big unknown out there. And with all that data going out there, it just, it just kind of creates that, that fear. And so everybody's grasping, and I'll say everybody, and I'm speaking for myself also, they're grasping for the fix. And unfortunately, in my opinion, and, and what we're starting to hear from the professionals, and, and this feeds into, I think, what Dr. Bub, the endemic plan, which I fully support, is there is no fix. This is going to be a reoccurring something that we live with. Last week, I was listening to, they were on the news, and they had Dr. Peterman from Primary Health, and he mentioned in their clinics, they were seeing a 50% positivity rate. And then, and I apologize, I can't remember if it was a physician from St. Luke's or St. Isles, but they were seeing somewhere between 30 and 40% positivity rate. This is where it kind of, I, I try to bring it back to the, the simplest level for me is, if we have a 40 to 50% community spread, masking our kids in the school, who, once they leave the school, are in this community, unless they just go back and stay in their bedroom, they're in this community with 50% spread. There's, we're not going to control it being the only entity that's masking someone. And, and this is what I went to when we dealt with this before, it's, the, the school district is, this monkey's on our back to say, well, mandate it with the kids because they bring it home to the parents. That, that just does not sit well with me. That, that just does not sit well with me when we have the kids protecting the parents. The mask effectiveness, I won't beat that up. At least some of the medical professionals are starting to recognize, and some of my colleagues mentioned it up here now, that the cloth masks are not effective. Now, I'm not going to say they're zero, but with this variant, they, they just are not effective. And that's why the discussion is shifting to, well, put them in medical grade masks. Well, I'll, I'll tell you, being in the fire department for 33 years, I was fitted for an N95 mask every year. Fitted. That has to fit me. They'd put a hood over my head. They would inject oils that if the mask fit you correctly, you couldn't smell it. So, it's not just a mask you put on and you're protected. Now, I know there's KNN95 masks and some other things, but those masks are very restrictive and, and it doesn't seem practical to me to have our children wearing that mask when that's not even 100%. There are plenty of studies out now and early on in this, we didn't have them, there is a significant social, emotional impact to our kids. The studies are there. They're coming out now. And I think that needs to be part of the discussion. You know, I, I talked to my colleague at, at Boise School District, the president of their school board today and we were just kind of talking. I won't get into the numbers because our, our data boards are a little bit different in how we track them, but at, I, I think we could probably all agree, at the absolute worst, we're even with our case counts, even from a ratio perspective. And that's with a school district that's been masked from the beginning with half the students that we have. So, if, this is where it kind of comes down to me, if masks were the fix, then we'd be seeing it next door. But it's because we have a 50% community spread. The masks are not going to fix it. I do appreciate, and I want to piggyback on what some of my colleagues said, I do appreciate the tremendous work that this school district staff is doing. I know that you are all working extremely hard and sometimes it's easy for us to sit up here and, and dialogue about some of these things, but we recognize that. When Dr. Bub shared with me the, the incentive package that recognizes and compensates, by all means it doesn't compensate you 100% for the work you're doing, but it's a little something extra because we realize we're in a, we're in an unusual situation and we're having to take unusual, extraordinary measures to get us through this. And I appreciate what every one of you do and, and just want to say thank you. And kind of in, in my closing comments is, I'll get to the home test piece and I think probably all of us, maybe some of us haven't had the tests where they put the thing up your nose. I may have suffered brain injury when they did mine and I can tell you for sure, if I have a home test, I won't be sticking it that far up. So, it makes me question, how effective are our results going to be if that's the way you're supposed to do it? How, how effective, how reliable is it going to be when someone brings back, oh, we have a negative test? Well, how did, how did you do the test? There's no, so the, the testing is still a, really kind of a questionable thing to me also. And so, I'll, I'll end with this. I fully support the endemic plan, bringing together a group. I would like that to be an administrative committee and not a board committee. I support the superintendent having authority to make adjustments as he or she sees fit based on the feedback and what they're seeing with the boots on the ground and do that at a micro level and make those adjustments. And then, I'm, I'm going to mention this piece and I, I would be supportive of if there was some motion this evening that I think we've reached a point where this, this dashboard, this emailing to our families, we're feeding into that fear. We, we have reached a point, in my opinion, that we're doing more harm than good with that. I know with me looking at it every day and seeing it on the news, it, it is draining and it's not changing anything. Our CD, our CDH partners who are in the public health, they're 30 some odd thousand tests behind. How accurate are those, those numbers? I think it's time we move beyond this. And so, I, I would actually be supportive of eliminating those, those data collections and those emails and those parent notifications. And those are just my thoughts and I'll, I'll close it there. Trustee Johnson.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, let me, I was going with questions first and then thoughts second, so let me go with some thoughts. First of all, I, you know, I think we have, I think we saw tonight and we've seen it in our public comment, not everybody feels exactly the same, right? So, I have some concerns with taking away a parent's right to know what's going on with their child in our school. So, that's, that's one of my concerns. I, I, I'm not comfortable, I mean, just like we don't want, parents don't want to be forced to have their kids wear masks, I don't think it's right to force parents to not know what's going on with their kids. So, I have some huge concerns with that. I also agree with you that sometimes, and I've seen the letters from now, I mean, I've gotten the notifications on my own child. I've got, in both an elementary and a middle school setting. I can understand how getting six notifications because your child shared a class with one student in a positive, can make and drive fear. So, I would hope we can maybe adjust that from an operational standpoint because I think that's a valid concern. But I also think the data is helpful just to know what's going on. I would never want to go back and hide information or data. So, so I, but I do think how we collect our data, I actually had this question for Dr. Bub, is how are we actually using, like, if, if we have 93 active positive cases in a school that day, what operational decisions are we making off of that data? Because I think that, because for me, what I'm looking at is trend. Like, I'm looking at, oh, we had a thousand, almost a thousand cases two weeks ago. Are we going to see 700 this next week and 600 the week next? Or is it going down or is it going up? But the daily case rate from a board standpoint doesn't, I don't know what you guys do with it.
Yeah. Chair Kofelt, Trustee Johnson. We're, we look at that, I mean, because we're in the same shoes, right? A lot of times, we're not getting that information until, hey, by the way, it was two or three days ago that we were, so we're not getting, it's, it's not good for that right now operational decision. We, we look at the trend line data and that's actually why I think dating it to the date that the kid was infectious gives us more accurate data than, hey, this is the day the kid brought it in. But from an operational standpoint, we look at overall cases, overall rates. That's how, helps us to try to determine, is there clusters that we can identify? Is there, you know, is this a select class? We would, we would get down to the granular level. Is this a select class? Is there some schools that were seeing things? But you're right. I mean, there's times when, when we get into that and we say, oh, well, yes, there was four cases in this class, those kids sat together, but those kids, that, that was five days ago and those kids have stayed home for the last five days. So, unfortunately, we don't have the answer to that. If people are doing rapid tests and they're doing them here at the district, we get those right away, but unfortunately, that's not always what's happening. So, it's, it becomes more difficult. It, it's not a perfect system when it comes to that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, to continue. I, I think what I hear is the daily case information is really used for positive notifications just to the school and the notifications that go out. But for the most part, most of us are looking at the trend information over time, which actually causes me to say, I'd like to see us have better information on our dashboard. I actually agree with the absent information because if we look at 85% of our students out, which was on some of those, or 86%, we're talking over eight, like, what, if we're 40,000 students, we're talking about 10 or 12,000 students out at that timeframe. That's different than the 1,000 positive COVID cases we have on our dashboard in that week. So, that's a big number to me. That's a much bigger conversation around educational quality, educational impact, how are we making up that lost time? You know, so that's where I'd like to see some of our conversation go around what is happening in the educational realm in these scenarios, especially if we've got 85% of our students out and then we've got, you know, 220 or more folks teaching in classrooms that aren't typically teaching in classrooms. Like, over time, that's going to have some educational quality impact and I'd like to see how we're going to manage through and handle that. I also echo the same thoughts that you had and Trustee Ozuna had, which is around, at what point do we, I mean, we really support our teachers, but at what point do our actions start to really support our teachers? And so, I'd like to understand where our teachers are at. I thought I heard a conversation around having a survey around morale, around work environment, around support, and even some information around how teachers feel around their own ability to teach in this environment. When the teacher's using their prep period and they're only be able to plan 15 minutes in advance, that's not a good structure, right? So, how are we going to handle the impacts of, I don't think we're getting out of this wave either. I mean, I think it's a wave. We're going to go in and we're going to go out, just like every other time. But how are we going to handle the impacts of this wave is the question that I have. And how are we going to look at that going forward? Because we're probably going to have another wave. This is the third one I've been through. So, we're probably going to have another one. How are we going to handle those situations? So, I love the idea of an endemic plan. I actually like the idea of having some, if we can do it, and I don't know how, some community info, feedback, including some parents or other community areas. And I do think it's worthwhile to have, we did this before, two board members, one who's kind of with two different views in that conversation because our community is divided and we should represent both of those views in our, in all of our conversations and make sure that we're, you know, looking at what everybody is thinking before we, and have the input before we make the decision. So, I think that covers everything on the board discussion list. I, I have one question for my colleagues because I heard something and I want to, it's kind of different than how we've talked about it before, so I want to kind of throw this out there. We used to say our North Star was to keep kids in school learning full time with a high quality education. I heard tonight, our support is for freedom. And I want to see where our board is at and understand if those work together, if they're different, how is that, how are we looking at that? Because I think we have a new board and I think it's important for us to talk through that.
Chair Kofelt, just real quick, Chair, I, I just want a really quick correction because I might have said it wrong. 86% of our students are in school, not out of school, which accounts for about six, little less than 6,000. I'm just doing the math off the top of my head. Don't judge me for this, but about 6,000 would be 15%. So, I, I just want to make sure, if I said that wrong, I apologize. That's, 86% of our kids are in school.
Thank you. You said it right. I did the math wrong.
Trustee Frazier.
Chairman Kofelt. To address the issues on the board discussion, the creation of an endemic plan, I am completely in favor of. I think that's an excellent idea. I, I think giving the superintendent authority to, to make some decisions on the fly is, is really important as we move forward as well. And, and I also support very much what Chairman Kofelt said regarding parent notifications and our dashboard. I, I have also read quite a few emails from parents that are saying they really don't see the point to getting these notifications of exposure. Most of them that I've talked to and have read have said they really do feel like going out in the community right now is, is pretty much being exposed. I mean, most places you go, you do hear a lot of coughing, that type of thing. And so, for them, they'd ask that perhaps that, that be removed. And so, I do support that. In relation to your question, Trustee Johnson, how does freedom, I, I want to make sure I understood your question correctly. How does freedom relate to putting our kids, making sure we have a North Star? Did I understand that correctly?
I just wanted to confirm, is our North Star still the same or is freedom now part of, like, freedom the new North Star?
Does freedom tie into the North Star conversation? Okay. Okay. Yes. For me, freedom and putting our kids first completely go together. I, I think when we discuss the North Star, which is making sure our kids get a meaningful education, that is 100% what, what our population is interested in when we talk about putting kids first. And, and freedom for parents and families to choose what is correct for their individual situations is definitely allowing that, that North Star. Allowing kids to receive the kind of meaningful education that their families, that their parents, that the people that are responsible for them deem as appropriate for them. And that, that does differ from child to child for sure and from situation to situation. As I said, I've talked to families that wearing masks are really important and they need to have that option. I, I mean, they have individuals in their home and they feel like that is something that really does keep vulnerable people safe. And that's so important that they can choose that. There are people that literally wearing masks causes a level of duress that it's terrible. So, that, that's not appropriate for them. And so, when I say freedom, I mean, yes, for their children to receive a meaningful education, for them to be present, those options need to be available. Does that clarify that a little bit?
I think so. I think I would ask maybe, can you clarify your freedom comments in relation to your parent notification comments around parents' right to know what their child is exposed to at school? Because maybe that will help me. Because that's where I, I got off on it a little bit.
Okay. So, freedom in relation to parent notifications and exposure, is that right?
Yeah. Like, if a parent wants to know, does, does the freedom policy or the freedom, I guess, I don't know what you call it, but, but freedom, does, are you in support of parents who want to know about notification, getting that notification?
The individuals that I have spoken to and the things that I have read in the emails that have come to all of us and on the dashboard, I, I've seen several where parents are saying, I don't see the point in getting those. So, I guess when we talk about freedom, I, I don't totally understand your question, I guess, and how that relates. But I do think in deciding whether or not that's appropriate, I, I think we need to look at, how does that information help them? What does that do? Like I said, right now, going out in the community, I have no doubt, I, I am being exposed to viruses right now. I mean, there, there are people that don't feel well everywhere. I went to the grocery store yesterday and I swear, half that line was coughing. I, I absolutely assume that when I leave my house, I am exposed. So, and I know a lot of our population feels that way as well. And so, I, I don't know, and actually a question I might have for Dr. Bub, is in putting together each day, those, that information to be sent out, who does that and how much work is that for those individuals?
Yeah. Trustee Frazier. It really depends on the school. So, a lot of times it's our administrators that are doing it every single day, compiling that data and getting it out. We have a, a system that helps, our blackboard system helps to, to get that out, but a lot of times, that's our administrators that are doing it. Sometimes, so that's not to take anything away from our classified staff there. They may be doing it at individual schools. I've heard it both ways, so.
Chairman, yeah, I'm just thinking back to a meeting we had, I believe it was November, that we had one of our nurses here that was talking about the strain it was at that time to do contact tracing, what it was taking away from them as individuals. So, yeah, looking at parent notification on that, I guess that is my question. Is it something, is it a tool that we really feel like is, is actually helping where honestly, I think most people really do assume I'm, I'm being exposed, I'm out in the community?
Trustee Johnson.
Yeah. Let me, let me put a different view and that's just, just, because I think we all get different letters. So, and it was clear in the, in the public comment, and you could look at the different zones and see the different trends, at least for who comments, but even then, 87 comments and 100,000 parents is still a different level of information. But, you know, I've had folks who do say, hey, I, I don't really want these notifications. They are causing the fear. But I've also had parents who say, I appreciate this notification. And, and it does vary by elementary and middle. So, I guess when I think about, when I think about freedoms, I think about choice. And so, what I would encourage us to consider is not taking things away from people, but giving them choice.
I'm just going to add one follow-up, just a clarification on my point about the, the data collection and the, and the, our dashboard is, I, I fully support parents knowing what's going on. That's why the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare has a fantastic dashboard where they can see how many kids by age groups are testing positive, how many are in the hospital, how, they, they can see all of that. I just think we're at a point now where it's not the school district's job to be doing that because it is so rampant in our community. There is that avenue for them to see that information and I totally support that. But it's at the area that it should be, at the state and county level rather than at the school district level. Just, just my feelings.
Mr. Chair, I, I think one of the things I would note is the history on how we got to even this dashboard. Because Idaho Department of Health and Welfare and Central District Health do not report positive cases in our schools with the school information. So, they'll report all kids in all situations for the whole community. So, the 35,000 cases that Idaho Department of Health and Welfare is reporting behind, that's statewide. That's not just Ada County. And then Ada County will report how many they're behind, which they have on their website. And then, our data and why it got created was because folks, parents in fact, actually asked for, I want to know what's going on in my school when it comes to COVID cases and COVID notice, so in my kid's school, in my district. So, that's how we got to this point. So, if I go now and look at that Department of Health and Welfare dashboard, I couldn't tell you on that data, I can, I can get down to Ada County level, but I can't tell you if that's Boise School District or West Ada School District or Kuna School District. So, I, that's where I get a little nervous about taking away that information from people. So, I, that's where I get a little nervous about taking away that information from people.
Fair enough, thank you. Any other, Trustee Ozuna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought I'd give my thoughts on parent notification. You know, I think the medical experts would agree that in times when we have high cases of community spread, it's very difficult to do contact tracing, it's just not effective. The same might be true of parent notifications. We all need to know that our kids are exposed at school right now every single day. My concern would be pulling that away now. We might lose an opportunity when there actually is value. Many of us are fortunate enough to be in situations where we don't have vulnerable family members. That's not the same for everybody throughout our district. There are cases when it's really helpful for a family to know, Johnny got exposed in class today. If Grandma's on chemo, don't go see Grandma for a couple of weeks. Those are good decisions that families should make when the information is valuable. I would agree. I don't know that it's valuable right now. My concerns are if we take it away, that we may not bring it back. And when's the right time to bring it back? But I think that that would be something good for administration to talk about and to talk about and get some staff feedback on and maybe to get some community feedback on. Because for people that don't care, you can certainly ignore it. For people that do care, they need the information.
Trustee Redford.
Yeah, I just want to call, clarify that I, I'm not in favor of just, you know, knocking everything out right this second. I understand we're in the middle of a, of a surge, so, you know, let's, let's ride it out. And I, I do support parents being notified if, if that's what they want. We were given an opt-out option earlier in the year for masks. So, I, you know, I would support an opt-in, you know, an opt-in, yeah, option for that. I don't know, again, how accurate that would be. I mean, when I drop my kid off at school, when I pass school yards, the majority of the kids are not masked. So, I, I really question that, you know, a lot of the parents are going to report that their kids are sick? Or, I, I don't know. I, I think, I think you're going to have some problems with accuracy. But again, if a parent reports that there is a COVID case, if there's a family that really cares about wanting to know, then put them on a list. They should be able to know. I support that.
Any, any other discussion or questions for Dr. Bob?
Chair Colfield, it, it would be extremely difficult to manage an opt-in. Just the way it works, we do it by class. We would, and I'm looking at Troy, because he's kind of the master of blackboard. But we would have, you would have to go through that list every single time for every single class. That would be extremely difficult for whoever's managing that.
Trustee Redford.
Could you do that by school? You know, like, okay, for example, we've all gotten the notifications, oh, you're, somebody in your child's class has lice. I mean, we don't do that through the district, that's just done at the, at the school level, you know? So, I'm looking at this, okay, for example, I'm looking at this list here, right? Eagle Hills, or, no, what is it? Lake Hazel Elementary School, okay, there were five cases. To me, five cases seems pretty manageable at the school level if you have, if you have a family that is really nervous. You know what I mean? But maybe that would be an option. I'm just spitballing. I, I do support parent choice.
Chair Colfield, it, it would be really, I, I mean, just the way we do that. So, when we, just because there's five cases, they may not be within those classes. And so, notifications go out by class. And the way we do those notifications, we, it's a click of a button right now. It would be pretty intensive to be able to, to be able to manage that. I, yeah.
Trustee Johnson.
Maybe I'll just make a suggestion. I think this is a great opportunity for that committee to have a conversation and come back to the board with some recommendations on it. For how do we keep parent choice and not cause onerous? Because I don't, I think Trustee Redford's saying, tell me if I'm wrong. But is, we don't want to cause onerous, more onerous on our staff, but we do support parent choice. So, maybe this is a good example of where having some sort of standing decision on how to get an endemic plan, talk through these issues. Surveys always comes up, what, what does that look like? All of those kind of things. I think that would maybe be an option for us going forward.
Yeah, and let me just be more specific on where that becomes difficult. At the secondary level, you're right, if this is a first-grade classroom, five cases within a school, manage, right? Five cla, five cases, 30 kids in each class, we're going through those lists, we can do that. COVID is more prevalent than we are seeing lice. I'm never seeing lice. So, COVID becomes more prevalent. And so, at the high school level, you're talking about a teacher could have 200 kids. And so, going through that, or a student may have access to 200 kids throughout the day, going through that list of 200 kids. Now, if you have five cases, you're going through a list of 1,000 kids to try to figure that out.
Oh, Trustee Redford.
I just wanted to acknowledge that, that's, that's, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And that was sort of what I assumed, so I'd like to hear that explained back to me. Thank you.
I, I don't want to cut anybody short. Our next, we're going to move into our action item and we're, we're two hours in. So, I, if there's anything, any questions or things that somebody needs, as we move into the action item, should, should there be an action? I want to make sure you have that opportunity. Trustee Johnson.
Mr. Chair, I don't have an action, or I think it's fine to move into the action item. I just would say, I kind of would like some time to think about this around kind of what motion to make. I'm a little nervous about making a motion, maybe somebody else already has one made. But with all the discussion, because we've had some different conversation. So, tell me if this is appropriate. I'd like to see if maybe one of our motions is to have the administration take all of our feedback and come back with a proposal to us at the next meeting around what a committee structure might look like and what kind of topics that would be in that and kind of ongoing how that would operate. Maybe that, because we've had different kind of opinions on it. So, I, I want to see if that sounds like kind of what you were looking for or what, what was, what your thoughts on the action was.
No, actually, I, I'm in, in line with what you're thinking. One is, you know, we've been two hours, I want to be respectful. So, we might need to take a, a quick break for restroom and stuff. And then also, yeah, to put, put a little bit of thought into this, you know, this may require more than one, more than one motion to accomplish what, what the board's looking to do. I do want to be respectful of everybody's time here, believe me. You know, this is just one of those nights where we've just got some business that's going to take a little bit longer. So, if there's no opposition to it, we could take a 10-minute break, give everybody time to do that, maybe get their thoughts together, and then come back and explore the action part of the agenda. Would that work? Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and adjourn now. It's 8:03 and we'll adjourn until 8:15.
Okay, I'll call the West State of School Board meeting back to order. And I'd like to propose something for a motion from my colleagues. We have a couple present, several tonight in our work session. And so that we give this as due diligence. And then we also have one presenter this evening that's from out of town that we need to make sure that we hear. So I would be, I wonder if anybody would be interested in proposing a motion to move to the next table until our next meeting, the student generation rate data analysis presentation from Ms. Horner? And if so...
Just for clarification, it would be a motion to postpone.
To postpone to the...
To the February 14th meeting.
February 14th meeting, great. Trustee Ozuna.
Mr. Chair, would you like that motion now?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we move the student generation rate data analysis to our February 14th meeting, postpone and move it to the February 14th meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone and move to the February 14th meeting, the student generation rate data analysis presentation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Frazier. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, thank you for that. So we'll move into the action portion of the district COVID-19 update. And so I would open the floor for any motions.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Johnson.
I'm going to do a two-part motion, so I'm going to do one motion first, but I want to kind of put it in flavor. So one motion is around the work group, one motion will be around endemic plan. So I'll start with the endemic plan. So I would move that the board asks the administration to start the creation of an endemic plan for moving for the next school year, or for the current and next school year.
Helps if I turn on. We have a motion to direct the administration to develop the outline of a working group to develop an endemic plan that they can bring back to the board. Is that what you're...
Let me, let me just, let me put it this way. I move that the board direct administration to start the creation of an endemic plan, period. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion to direct administration to start development of an endemic plan. Do we have a second? Trustee Ozuna? We have a second from trustee Ozuna. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chair, for a second.
Trustee Johnson.
Thank you. I would move that administration come back at the February 14th meeting with a proposal for a work group and the makeup of that work group and the topics that will be covered as part of the endemic plan.
Yeah, just for my clarification, so is that, that's not part of them developing the, putting together the endemic plan, planning process?
If you give me a second, I'll explain. How's that go for you?
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we have a motion. Can you repeat your motion, please, trustee Johnson?
Yes, I would move that the administration come back to the board at the February 14th meeting with a proposal for a work group, makeup of that work group and the topics that work group will cover for the creation of the endemic plan.
Okay, the motion is for, to direct the administration to begin to come back to the board at our next meeting with a proposal for a work group and the makeup of that group and the topics that the group will cover, including the creation of the endemic plan. Do we have a second? Trustee Ozuna.
I'm going to second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second. And any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chair, maybe I can explain my thoughts. So we're going to ask them to create an endemic plan, and I think what I'm looking for in the motion is to understand who will they include in that creation of that plan? What's the work group look like? And then what pieces and parts will we put into the endemic plan? So will we have, like, Dr. Bub had some categories, parent notification, superintendent operations. I think some, you know, there's probably some things around education and decision-making processes. So what's the framework around what will be in that endemic plan? And that's just a recommendation. I think the board can still adjust it at that point, but it gives us a starting place for what would go, like, I don't know what goes into an endemic plan, I don't know if anybody else does, but I'd like to see if they can do some research and look at what people are doing as they're creating these things and come back to us with the topics that would typically be in an endemic plan.
Trustee Ozuna.
Trustee Johnson, I think that those are, are great things, and I think that those are important for us to know. My only concern with it is the timing, and only because I think that it's more, for me personally, it's more important for a work group to come together to talk about our current situation, which I wouldn't actually call endemic yet. So that's where I'm caught up in the wording on my motion.
Mr. Chair, let me make sure I understand the concern. The concern is, is that there's things outside of creating an endemic plan that may need to be discussed by that work group. Is that right?
That's correct. I think if we're looking at, do we need to make changes to our quarantine policies? Do we need to make changes to our notifications? Do we need to make changes to our public dashboard? Do we want to, are there any, are there anything out there related to COVID that needs, is there anything that needs to be adjusted? And if so, is that the right committee to do it in?
Yeah.
And I don't think that's endemic-related. Or, I mean, it's probably part of the move there.
Yeah. Let me tell you my thinking on that. So pandemic, endemic, the difference is pandemic ends and endemic is more ongoing, like, we have a longer time period. But without having gone and looked at an endemic plan, I still think we're going to have some of the same topics in it. It's just the difference is, how do we manage it more on an ongoing basis versus when we originally created the pandemic plan? It was, I mean, I know, I didn't think we were going to be here two years later when we started that process. So I think a lot of our plan was built for sort of singular incidences instead of an ongoing piece. So I guess I don't see it limiting, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to having different language for a motion either. I'm just saying, I don't, I don't see an endemic plan being limited to any different topics than we already have in our pandemic plan. It's just a different way of managing.
Trustee Ozuna.
Trustee Johnson, would you be open to the removal of the date so that administration can work that in around everything else that they're looking at right now?
Have to think about that. Maybe I'd like some feedback from the rest of the board on that.
My, my thought on that is I think we've maybe separated out something that could be rolled into one, that we've had the motion to direct the superintendent and then their staff to start the process of developing an endemic plan. And, and with that, would, in my mind, as they're developing that, is the structure of that working group, who's in it, estimated timeframes, being specific about what they need to do in that, I think kind of maybe circumvents a little bit that working group. It will be incumbent upon that working group to, to come up with the components of that endemic plan and then bring it to the board. That's, that's my thought. Seems like maybe we're trying to break out into two motions, something that really could be rolled into one. Trustee Frazier.
Mr. Chair, I kind of had the same thought process, and maybe that's just my, maybe I'm not, I'm confused, but yeah, to me, it kind of sounds like your first motion, which I do support, to have them come back to us, that perhaps when they do that, they'll have some of those components there to be discussed.
Trustee Redford.
Yeah, I guess I had a similar thought that, excuse me, just letting Dr. Bub, you know, kind of take charge of that and draw up a plan. He's, I trust his instincts and his judgment, and he knows more about what's going on in the, in the schools than anybody else sitting up here. So I support Dr. Bub, just kind of, you know, giving him full rein on that and bringing it back to us.
So let me see if I got the feedback. There's concern on the date and concern on having what's involved in the endemic plan be part of the motion, but the work group and the makeup of the work group is good. Did I get that right?
Yeah, my, my comments were, I would kind of expect if they're putting together the, the beginning process of the endemic plan, that that would also include the work group, who's in it, and that that they would bring back to us, but unless that wasn't specified enough in the motion.
I guess, how about this? Let me do this, because I do think, I do think we need to have an understanding of, we had different feedback on what the work group would look like. So I'd like some clarity on what we come back with. And so usually, in order to get that, we usually have to put a time certain in our motions to do that. So that's, so however that time certain is, I don't have a, I guess I'm looking for some board direction, do we, I guess what I'm trying to give is, do we want a work group or not? Because that's what the motion is really about, is just putting clarity in record that we want that, and we want that information back for the board to give feedback on.
Trustee Frazier.
Thank you for that, that clarification, Mr. Chair. Right now for me, I'm comfortable with the first motion that you made and allowing Dr. Bub, excuse me, and admin to come back and kind of present to us and then possibly make a decision at that point. To me, it almost feels redundant right now, a little bit with what we're talking about, again, from my understanding.
I'd look for some feedback from trustee Ozuna on the work group piece.
I think I'm struggling to understand how the work group is different than the first motion in the development of the, putting together the work group to create the endemic plan. So I'm not sure exactly what we're asking for with the second, although, I mean, I understand it, but I'm concerned about the timeframe, really.
Okay. All right, so I think what I heard is, we don't need to say anything or have another motion. We're just assuming Dr. Bub will bring us back a work group information for the board to give feedback on. So I would withdraw my motion.
Okay. Motion is withdrawn, thank you. Any other motions related to the district COVID-19 update? Trustee Frazier.
I would like to make a motion that we remove exposure notification at this time. I think with the, the nature of, as trustee Ozuna said, the, the high rate of exposure in our, our area right now, I don't think it's necessary. I do recognize that that might be something that, that has to be addressed later, and when it does, I do think we're in a spot that we'd be, we'd be able to, to look at it. If it needed to be brought back, if something needed to be happened, I'm very willing to go through that process. But at this point, I think it would be helpful to our employees. I think it would be respectful of them and definitely of the community to, to remove that variable right now. So like I said, my motion is to remove the exposure notifications at this time.
Can we have a motion to remove the exposure notifications? Do we have a second? Trustee Redford.
Could I ask a question first? I'd like Dr. Bub's opinion on that.
Would you, trustee Redford, what I would recommend is, if it's something that you're considering, that we second it and then we can definitely engage in that discussion?
Yeah. Okay, great, second it then.
Okay. And we have a second from trustee Redford, so discussion. And trustee Redford, do you have a question for...
Yes, I would like Dr. Bub's opinion on removing exposure notifications.
Yeah, Chair Kofelt, trustee Redford. Here, here's what I would say. I think that it is, I know that there are group, that there are groups of people out there that the notifications, the consistent notifications are extremely stressful for them. I would say with the community exposure, the way it is, I will go off of a little bit about what trustee Frazier said. There's this expectation in our community right now that you've probably been exposed, and not just through schools. And I would even say not at schools, right? You're calling in six at a school. We all know people that go to the grocery stores, or maybe just the people I've talked to, go to the grocery store not feeling good, whatever. So I just, I, I think it's a fine line, being able to predict what people want. I, I don't know, there's going to be people that say, hey, we really want these notifications. There's going to be people that say, gosh, we don't want these notifications. Kind of going back to your original statement, how do you opt in, opt out of these? But right now, I think it's a fair expectation, with the spread at the level it is, that you have been exposed if you've been outside of your house. And even inside your house, I hate to say it, you've probably have been exposed.
Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a, kind of a different question for Dr. Bub. What kind of extra effort is required to stop what we're doing today? Like, what, what do we gain in that process?
Chair Kofelt, trustee Johnson, in regards to, I'm assuming you're saying, just stop what we're doing today in regards to the notifications?
Yeah, do we, if it's administrators and support staff making the notifications, do we change anything going on in the classroom for teachers, give them any extra support back, anything, any of value, but other than, I know it takes some time off of our administrators, but are we getting anything back in the classroom by taking away the parents' right to know?
Well, I would say that our, our administrators are instructional leaders, and so giving them, giving them extra five minutes to get back into the classroom to, to lead instruction is always, you know, is always welcomed. So that, that would be what we would gain, we would gain. And, and for some of our classified staff who are, you know, I'll go through in my, my report later, but some of our classified staff who are playing the Jenga game every morning to, to try to fill subs and things like that, it takes, if they're the people that are responsible for that, whoever's responsible for those every day, it takes that off their plate.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, trustee Johnson.
Is there any concern on your part on waiting and having that conversation be part of an endemic plan proposal?
Chair Kofelt, trustee Johnson, I'll, I'll do as the board wishes. If, if we want to wait on that and have that as part of the discussion, we'll absolutely put that as part of the discussion.
Any other discussion? Trustee Ozuna.
Mr. Chair, thank you. You know, a lot of the feedback that I get is around our numbers and what we're showing, and are we being transparent with what's out there? And I got to tell you, I think this is a step in the wrong direction.
Trustee Johnson.
Mr. Chair, I want to actually kind of echo that, and then I want to say something around parent notification, because I, I think it's a slippery slope. So let me give you an example. A couple of years ago, my son was injured at school, and I didn't get notified that he was injured, pretty significantly injured, not, I mean, I'd say we need to go to the hospital injured, but, and I was pretty upset as a parent that I didn't get a phone call home from the nurse with the injury. So I get a little bit nervous about stopping parent notification of things that parents want to know about, because that's a slippery slope for us to go down. So that's what I would say.
Yeah, and I appreciate both the comments that trustee Johnson and trustee Ozuna have made. I, I guess my, my thought around this is, in your case, like, with your son hurt, yeah, I, I mean, that's definitely a notification issue and should have happened, and I would, I would support that. These notifications that are going out, and I'm just basing it on, I, I would say, and this is anecdotal, I, I would say 70% of the emails I get, maybe a little less, are around, part of the conversation is, I was notified five times today that my child was exposed. And, and in listening to how the, the notification goes, their child may not have even been exposed. They just happen to be in a room, that they may never have had contact with the individual. And so for me, I'm just looking at, is it really a valuable notification, or is it just, and I guess that's in the eye of the beholder. Is it a valuable notification? I mean, if, if we knew you had a significant exposure, different story, but right now we're just notifying because you were in the same room. because you were in the same room, and you may have been on two separate sides of it. And so we're creating this stress on our families that doesn't really seem necessary. Trustee Ozuna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want maybe to remind the board that the reason why we send the notification of a classroom positive case, so I won't say exposure, right? We don't know if they're 24 feet apart or what, but a classroom positive case was to stop contact tracing, to free up time for our staff. I mean, that was a conscious effort that was made by the board to still try and give parents some awareness. Again, if they have vulnerable situations, I do think that that's important for them, or, you know, some of them want to know. And it might make decisions in, in what they do going forward. Again, right now, we have significant amount of community spread. Could we get rid of this and bring this back? You know, I, I have concerns about doing that too, because I think, you know, this brings up the conversation again.
Mr. Chair, I think-
Trustee Johnson.
The other, you know, I, I love our inboxes and I hate our inboxes, because they don't really give us a good indicator of truly what's going on in our community. They give us an indicator of people who have concerns about what's going on in our community and our schools. And if we go out and ask some parents, and I've gotten a couple this week of parents that said, you know what, I don't ever email you. I haven't emailed you in entire time during this pandemic, but here's what I see going on. So I guess I, I get a little concerned when we start to say, well, my inbox says this, so this is what I think. But let me walk you through kind of even a scenario that isn't health risk at home. So when a parent gets a notification, depending on what the parent wants, a parent who doesn't want it, delete it, fine. Like, just delete it, they don't, they don't have to know. Certainly, we had some instances where a student got the notification, I don't think that's right. But when a parent who does want it gets a notification, that usually prompts a conversation around, you know, what happened in school? How was that set up? Were you close to that student? And then, a lot of our kids right now are in activities where they are having to get tested to be part of the activity. So I'll give you, I mean, I, we're going to do it this weekend. We're going to go to an out-of-state competition where we have to test to get into the competition. And if I get the notification today, which I did, then I'm going to be watching my daughter and probably going to pre-test her before we go, because if she's positive, I don't want to fly all the way. So there is other reasons why it's good for parents to have those notifications besides the immunocompromised. So I think parents should have that right to know, and I hate to take that right away from them for all of those operating reasons as well.
My, my question would just be, based on our community spread right now, and the numbers we see in our school, the numbers we see in Boise, the numbers we see all around us, in, in your scenario, if you were a parent going somewhere for a trip, would you not do that anyways? Would, would you base it on whether you got an email that your student may have been exposed in a classroom?
I would, because we're taking extra precautions outside in the community. So my real only risk right now is in school.
Trustee Ozuna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one more thing to add. And I think back on what my inbox looks like, because it's probably similar to the rest of yours. You know, I've received those same emails that I've got, I've received five COVID exposure notifications this week. And then it goes on to say, we have massive outbreaks in our schools, please bring back a mask mandate. I'm not getting the same emails that say, I've received five of these and it's giving me all of this extra concern. It's more of an attention to, gosh, we have a lot of COVID exposure in our schools.
Any, any other discussion? No? Okay, so we have a motion to, and a second on remove the exposure notification emails. So all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And the board votes aye, so motion passes three-two. Any other motions related to this, this topic?
Mr. Chair, for clarification, you mean the chair votes aye?
The chair. What did I say?
The board.
Yes. Three-two would have meant I voted, yes. I apologize for saying board. Okay. So moving on, superintendent update. Dr. Bob.
Chair Kofelt, I'm going to make mine really quick, but I think it's really important, and trustee Ozuna touched on it, and I know trustee Frazier touched on it as well. But I'm going to give you my personal experiences with our staff and what I saw in, in buildings this past week, because I think it's that important to recognize some of the people. And so one of the, I got over to Meridian Middle School, and, because they were short on subs, and I was over there to sub. And all I wanted to do was sub, give me the key to the classroom. And here's what I observed. I observed one of our classified staff members who was literally doing everything she possibly could to make sure that our schools stay open. I then walked out and saw one of our custodial staff working hard to sanitize a part of the building. What our classified staff are doing for us every single day is truly remarkable, and they're not, it's, it's not always noticed. I'm going to challenge the community, send an email. Listen, they go a long ways. I'm, I'm going to tell you, it goes a long ways. And that kind of leads me into my second story. We do these West Data Staff Members of the Month. And we happen to go out and do some Staff Members of the Month this last week. And when I was in buildings, this is what the Staff Member of the Month entails. The principal writes something up about the person and says, hey, this person is doing a spectacular job because of this. As we went and visited the schools, it put tears in people's eyes to be able to say, I'm, I'm being recognized. And this is both classified and certificated staff. That's how far a thank you goes. I think sometimes we sit at home and we go, oh, you know what, they know I'm thankful. They don't. Just assume they don't know you're thankful. No matter who they are, and I love the fact that we talked about masks or no ma, listen, no matter who they are, or what your beliefs are, thanking people right now goes a long, long way. It, taking the extra five minutes to send a note to say, hey, I appreciate what you're doing for me every single day, what you're doing for our community, what you're doing for our kids, working late hours, doing all, it goes a long, long way. I can't say thank you enough, so I'm going to take this form to be able to say it. What goes on in the trenches of our schools is unbelievable. By our teachers, who I see sitting here right now, what you guys do every single day is unbelievable. I wish there was a better way to be able to recognize that and take a snapshot. I was at Heritage Middle School the other day and walking into the classrooms and watching kids engaged in learning, and the teacher up in front having great conversations with them, talking to them. That's what education is about. Seeing these minds just work on difficult concepts, that's what it's all about, and that's what we're providing every single day. So when we hear things like, oh my gosh, what kind of education is going on, I'm going to tell you, amazing education. Shoot me an email, we'll go hit schools together. I absolutely have 100% confidence in what our teachers are doing. Is it always perfect? Absolutely not. It's not always perfect. But what our staff are doing every single day is 100% worth note and worth recognition. So thank you to our staff for everything they do.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Okay, so the next item is the consent agenda, so I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Trustee Redford.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Frazier, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. The next item is work session. I just want to give those that are sitting here just a quick idea of how this is going to work. So we're going to relocate, and it's just because it's, it's just easier in the conference room for us to do the work sessions. It's a much formal, a much less formal setting, and so we're kind of facing each other and things. So we're going to move and do that. We will have video, and we will have audio of that, so you'll be able to see and hear. Being that, right after the work session, we move into executive session, we will adjourn from there and move into the executive session. And then, once we come out, we'll come back here to adjourn. Does that make sense? So we're going to stay there for both the work session and the executive session. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we should start hearing some audio coming through in just a few seconds. Okay, can you hear us now, Ken? Okay, so expand the window so people in there can see. And then go ahead and bring up the audio and let me know when you have the audio up and running. Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we're into the work session part of our agenda. And the first presentation will be from Mr. Myers, the West Data Chief Academic Officer regarding West Data School District Calendar. So, Mr. Myers.
Marcus, agree with this. Can I just give a little introduction on this? One of the things that we, first of all, not a decision point tonight, but we get a lot of questions on the calendar, and why we do things on the calendar. So I've asked Marcus to provide just some clarity, so everybody knows kind of the process behind that, what that looks like, what different options would be. Marcus has met with a bunch of different teams that he'll get in, or with a team with a bunch of different folks, and I think he'll get into that, but I just think it's really important that the board understands exactly where we are with the calendar and everything. So.
Thank you. Well, the information we have for you to review this evening is around two proposals. And the first thing I want to say about this is that, not that this hasn't happened in the past, but I want to let you know that there was a tremendous amount of intentionality behind building these two calendars. It, we, and by "we," it was executive team, our academic leadership team, which are composed of department leads from each of our eight main academic departments, from federal programs to special education to CTE assessment, so on and so forth. And so, information was provided and input was shared through the lens of that team about what is the impact the calendar has on instruction within each of those departments? Not only just the positive impact, but the unintended consequences of making changes to a calendar systematically like that through the lens of academics. Then that same calendar was run through an operational standpoint. What are the minimum instructional minutes in order to make, in order that we need to meet? Does a calendar support that? Are the changes we're making operationally viable, given what we're doing over the scope of the year? And then really through the lens of this, which is, our calendar becomes foundational to the instruction that takes place within a student's day, and what does that look like? And there are systemic pieces within a calendar that can promote student learning that way, and there are other systemic pieces that we need to take another look at. So what I want to say through both of these proposals is that both are absolutely viable and doable. Okay? We have a world of opportunity in front of us with the calendar, and I think it's great that we're taking a really hard pass look over foundationally with our calendar, what does that look like for our students? What are the opportunities we have? And then what are some of the systemic challenges, both academically and operationally, that are going to allow us to kind of take a look at what we can do? I do want you to know that the teams, the leadership teams met with and the proposals to principals who then gave us feedback on the initial proposal one calendar, that was their same lens. And so I want you to know that we're on the same page with that, and that we want to be able to provide the foundation of instructional, a student's instructional day over the course of the year to promote student learning the best. And so, a lot of what I've typed up, that I'm not necessarily going to go through each individual bullet, because I've given enough to review that, but I do want to go over some of the main highlights as far as, on proposal one, now proposal one was, we initially started that work toward the end of October, because we wanted to have something, major holidays on the websites for families to be able to prepare, because we were giving some feedback in regards to scheduling holidays and winter break, when they come up for the winter holidays. And so, that initial work started toward the end of October, with some work in the month of November, with some calendar review as far as instructional minutes, and then a draft was put on the website. Given some feedback that we received, and again, in addition to some additional requests, we want to take a look at, well, what could we do through the lens of, can we end the semester before holiday break? I want to let you know this, we sure can. We absolutely can. In fact, it would be the recommendation of instructional leadership teams, that that's something we continue to explore. But they've given some timeframe and systemic operational changes and academic changes that we need to take place, we're going to need some time to set that up and make sure we're promoted that positively and effectively that way, because there are some unintended consequences with that type of proposal. And so I'm going to go through some of those tonight. Very happy to provide some clarification. Please let me know what I can do to help provide some of that clarification, knowing that I'm certain that you have some questions around calendar. The first, on the first proposal, I want to let you know of some of the changes that existed between this year's calendar and this proposal one. Some of the major changes that academic leadership wanted to look at and say, here are some processes and practices we think we need to take a look at. The first one is through the lens of full day collaboration days. We have collaborative teams across our district, and we want to make sure they're working effectively and given time to be able to do that. Those full day professional days for our teachers, for our building leaders, for our teams are absolutely essential. We appreciate those four days over the course of the year. There is a need to provide some additional structure. One area in academics is professional development district-wide toward priorities and outcomes that we've identified district-wide. Right now, we don't have that. We have a little bit of time at the very beginning of the year. We have some in-service days built in that are building directed, and our building leaders do a fantastic job of setting those up toward building-wide outcomes, but there are some district-wide outcomes, and currently right now, we don't have a training day to be able to provide district-wide supports toward those outcomes and provide those trainings. What tends to happen is on the full day collaboration days, we're invited out by building teams, or we provide opportunities by building teams, and it tends to become a little intermittent, based on the number of people we can send to schools and what we can provide district-wide. So I want you to know that with those four days, the first thing that we prioritized was, can we build an adult instructional calendar to say, here are the outcomes in West Data, that's based on our sit plan, we want to perform better in instructional, what do our teachers need to know, what do our leaders need to know, what do our classified staff need to know in order to improve ourselves, and what can we do district-wide on a professional learning day rather than just time to collaborate? Super important, but some more structure behind that. And so that was one of the first ones. We also moved those from Fridays and Mondays in this year's calendar to Wednesdays. Wednesdays are already our designated professional days, where we hold collaboration on those days. There are some personnel challenges with holding those on Fridays, and the number of days that we weren't having high attendance on those days, and for good reason, often, but sometimes not for good reason. And so we want to support having as much attendance as we possibly can during those professional learning days, so we moved them from a Friday to a Wednesday. A big step operationally, we made those changes to ensure that. The other piece was to take a look at the time spent with teacher prep time, that idea of, it's a stressful time, we're planning more than we ever have before, and having to be intentional. I want to provide some additional support with that. So in an academic leadership stance, we've really secured time before school, and this is guaranteed time that leaders can meet with their personnel to talk about, what do you need to know to survive in the first month of school? What do the absolute essentials need to know? Where are we going to progress with that? And then we meet on that first professional learning day to really build up that training together as a team. And so, wanting to build some, not so much additional prep time, but to secure the time we have as prep time for teachers to get their classrooms ready, to be able to support that. So we added that at the beginning of the year, then we also added on proposal one, we also added an in-between semester dedicated, and we just call it teacher prep time. It is what it is. The other piece behind this is we wanted to ensure that each of our levels, when kids are at school, whether they're six years old or 16 years old, all kids at West Data are at school on the same, on the same days. The way our calendar exists now, and I know we've had some recent changes to that, we've eliminated some of the early release timeframes as secondary, a lot of that has to do with logistical, you know, and operational pieces behind transportation. In fact, that was the main driving force behind it. But I want you to know that even prior to that discussion with operations, we had changed that within our calendar. The early release days, although really great for the adults within the system and it provides some planning time, it does put schools on different schedules at different levels. And so to eliminate that, it also captured some instructional minutes back, so that we could, at certain sites, for example, like with IFA and Renaissance, who were on different schedules that way, because they couldn't recoup the number of minimum instructional minutes, we were able to recoup those back partially because of eliminating early release days that. And so really thinking through, if we're going to hold professional learning days, and we want everybody on the same calendar together in West Data, those are some of the instructional minute changes that we needed to make, and that we had somewhat off along the schedule. There are some other pieces on proposal ones that haven't been finalized. That's the third thing I really wanted to bring up. And again, a lot of the focus and changes are in the document in front of you here, so I don't want to belabor that. But there's some other pieces around balancing instructional minutes in quarters and then also by semesters. We are not perfectly balanced in proposal one. We are as close as we can within proposal one, because first semester does tend to get impacted by the number of non-instructional days and holidays that exist with that, especially within some AV schedules that we have in our high schools. And so, they're not perfectly balanced. And I can tell you too, that I think changing the conversation around calendars for our staff, our patrons, and our students, and that, given some of the unknowns in our current instructional environment and operational environment, we may need to make some changes in here. We're not going to, we're going to do everything we can to pre-plan and prevent some of those changes, but let me talk to you about one of them. SAT day. Okay? There is some legislative action around SAT and how that's being paid for, and whether or not that day takes place within the instructional day in West Data. Those are decisions we'll need to make after some further legislative decisions are made. But again, that might be an instructional calendar change on here, and so there are some days changes here. And then given some of our unknowns as we move into 22, 23, we might need to sit back and do this, but given that we've recouped some instructional minute time, we have the flexibility for that. Another piece behind that is because we weren't able to capture some instructional minutes, we have an extra working calendar day, and so we get to decide, or can decide, I'd like to work with our association in deciding, how can we work that day into our calendar with things like spring conferences, something great for kids that we can sit down and hold conversations with, maybe some struggling students, or have conversations with families in regards to, here's where your students are at, here's what we'd like them to be, and let's sit down and schedule some time to have those great conversations. It also would allow for some additional teacher prep time to be built into that, if that wasn't in need at that particular time. And so we'd be able to flex some of that out a little bit, given the instructional time. So, I think changing the conversation around calendars and that, just like with any instructional planning document, there might need to be some changes here. We're going to hold true to holidays and to what we do with families, here's what we're going to secure, but there are some timeframes within this calendar that we may need to take a look at as this school year progresses. Not anticipating a tremendous amount of changes, not likely changes are going to impact family planning, but ones that we need to address as we move in instructional. Also, within proposal one, and much of this goes into proposal two, the assessment calendars that we've had discussions around, around there's a bank of instruction, an assessment window, a time with leaders, a time with teachers, and then another rollout of those outcomes and new strategies, that's built into this calendar as well. And so you can see that the Wednesday professional learning days tie into that collaboration time, and they're better scheduled throughout the course of the year instructionally. Okay? Not that that wasn't a focus this year, but there were some weird off weeks in there where some timeframes are eight weeks and others are 11. We're much more evenly balanced within instructional and assessment timeframe with that in there. Okay? So that's proposal one in a nutshell. And then with that, proposal two. Well, first, are there any questions around proposal one? Or would you, let me just jump.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
You said that the instructional hours are off a little bit between first and second. Let's ask her how far.
Well, so on, you mean on just proposal one?
Yeah.
On proposal one, it's less, well, there are minutes associated with it. In proposal one, and I can pull the exact numbers on that, in proposal one, we're off less than, I'm going to make an estimate here, okay, on that one. I have the details, I think, on this next document, but it's less than three instructional days we're off on the semester balance, less than three instructional days. That's a little different as you move into quarters that way, but in finalizing this, and some of those are gained back with what happens with SAT, but it's less than, it's less than five instructional days within that week's time period, if that makes sense.
So can we assess from a teacher's point of view then, what does that look like if they have X number of days to teach a lesson for a semester, and it looks a little bit different for second semester? I imagine that that impacts lesson plan and that type of thing. How big is?
It doesn't as much, because second semester is filled with a lot of standardized tests. ISAT during that time, whether it be SAT, so there's a lot of that. So it ends up kind of working out. As we look at the other districts, they have unbalanced semesters as well, and they just occasionally use all of the standardized tests.
Okay, great.
That's a lot of what happens with them. Yes, thank you. And I apologize, I didn't give you the exact minute breakdown on that, we just wanted to make sure that those grading periods were equalized. And then proposal one, they are better equalized than proposal two, but we can talk about why.
Can you say again, what's the difference between the second semester has more than first, or second?
Second semester on both of these proposals has more additional instructional minutes, but a lot of that is toward the end of that second semester is dedicated for summative assessments, statewide summative assessments that occur in instruction within that calendar. So even though there are more minutes, more of those minutes are used for end-of-year seminars and end-of-year events, excuse me.
Can I ask for some thoughts on the, so the second semester has more minutes. What I'm looking at is, we end, we have a holiday on a Monday, the 29th, and then we have two days, kids come back for two days of school. And I guess I was wondering if we have some flexibility there or not, because usually, I mean, most people would like to just take off, right? Then my other question is, we have, what's the difference between a teacher prep day and a professional learning day?
Great.
Because we have a teacher prep day on the 17th, but then we have professional learning days?
I appreciate that. So the first question in regards to, could we end sooner than May 31st, so that we're not coming back on a Tuesday, or a Wednesday, that way, before a day? This 31st represents minimum instructional minutes, because we were able to, like, tighten up those minimums. When we, when we were able to secure some times back on this, about the third draft of this document, we're looking at about draft number six of this right now, on the third draft of this document, the end of school went out further till that Friday date, and we were able to recoup some of those days back. So this does represent minimum instructional minutes while still giving us a little bit of flexibility for some of the unknowns that could happen with the last semester. If that makes sense.
It does.
We can definitely continue to explore, continue to whittle away. I know that we are, so another piece where some flexibility within the calendar as far as minimum instructional minutes may be beneficial, is that with some of our transportation challenges, we need to look at bell scheduling. Bell scheduling is going to be very tight on daily instructional minutes, given some decisions we need to make with transportation, with start and end dates impacting school at different levels. And so having a little bit of flexibility with that, knowing that where that flexibility may lie on the minutes, will be with, probably not exist within the calendar here, although we'll get to it.
Is there a reason we start in the morning, we don't start on a Monday?
We, so, other than, on proposal one, teachers would come back on the 17th. Monday allows for, it's a good day for device distribution, it's a great day for meet the teachers, it's typically a better day than a Friday would be operationally. That was feedback from building principals. That was feedback from building principals that way. However, we, if the board will, we can start back on a Monday and we just meet them. We would ratchet back the hit day of school or more likely we'd take a look at what happened within first semester. Like I said, anyone's a possibility, it's just a matter of where we flex those days and how we adjust the calendar that day. Feedback from building principals was Tuesday would be nice because operationally we'd be able to take care of some pieces.
And if we move that date up, meaning later in August, then we, then discrepancy, it would, A, it would hurt our minutes and B, discrepancy between the two semesters would be just even bigger.
Yeah, I just wondered, we have, we've never started on a Monday, I was wondering if there was a reason behind. So sometimes it's around the Thursday, sometimes it's around the Wednesday, sometimes it's around the Tuesday.
Some of it has to do with teacher return timeframe, like when teacher contract times go back on, the amount of prep that they have, what's gonna take place on the, like the adult instructional side of this? And really the thought, the main thought, well, I started on a Tuesday, device distribution, back to school, meet the teacher, some of the community pieces we can put in place at school, so on Monday would be a nice thing for that.
Would be?
Would be today, yeah.
So teacher prep day versus professional learning day, what's the difference?
So teacher prep day is exactly that. It's teacher preparation in order to plan for the next day or set up their classroom, which is what the prep days are to the end of the year. In between the two semesters, that prep day is designated for grading, report carding, and really just having some flexibility within the two semesters. Backing that up to a holiday is nice, not that there's an expectation that teachers are gonna work on that holiday, but it also allows for some data integration pieces over that timeframe where we stop and store grades and then we reintegrate students in classes online and in online setting. So basically assign students in our online platforms to, to their next semester classes. That does take a little bit of time, it's nice to build a flex day for that. Because essentially what could happen is you end a semester and the very next day, you could have new students that start that class, that are in that class, but they're not in the online environment for that class and don't have access to the resources. Great question.
I mentioned the feedback on that was probably three, four, eight, right?
Having a prep day in the middle of that is, was something. The other thing that I feedback on, that's what we'll compare. The other thing I want everybody to understand a little bit, we always compare our schedules to other districts. How this district can do it. One of the things that I would think about in West data, because especially at the secondary level, if you look at a two-week period, if you are at, whatever school district, school district X and you're going to school every, every day for an hour, you are gonna get 10 hours of instructional instruction. In West data, you're going an hour and a half every other day. You're gonna end up with seven hours of instruction, seven and a half hours of instruction. So if, that does, the options that we give, I think are amazing. We value kids' ability to get into CTE courses and all of those things. By moving that, it drastically changes those options. And so that's the sacrifice we have to be able to offer so many lessons to our kids. Which is, I think, when I talk to kids and when they walk across the stage, one of the biggest things to say is, I have a ton of options. I was able to get the education that they might. Which is exactly why we moved from a six to seven period day to the AV schedule days that have the flexibility and travel numbers of students within their scheduling. Exactly why, okay. Proposal two, let's talk about proposal two. So proposal two, I want to let you know this, which is the academic leadership team operations met around proposal two, given the request for, what would it look like if we ended this semester before we took break? Would there be an academic value behind it? What, what I charged them with in the conversation we had was, we basically did a story activity. We said, what are the strengths associated with a calendar that does that? What are the opportunities it affords us? What are some of the areas of need? Like what is it we're going to have to address in order to roll this out? And then what are the barriers? Basically, they're not insurmountable challenges, but what are some of the, if this were to happen, knowing that it could be good for kids, what would be some of the barriers we need to overcome systemically? Because we've built up years of a system that doesn't end before Christmas break. And so reversing that's gonna take some chance, some opportunity and challenges. So first of all, I do want you to know that it is the recommendation of academic leadership team, it is the recommendation of operation team to continue to explore, can we end semester break before holiday break? It makes for a logistic, like logically, it makes sense. Why would you not end it there and then come back? And so they're in full support of that, knowing that we can do everything, but we gotta go back and take a look at some of the barriers that exist and areas of need. With the other thing is for our patrons, it does align better with surrounding districts. Not all of them, but it does align better with surrounding districts. And it tends to build an instructional calendar that makes a little more sense on the mid-semester point with Christmas. But also with the, the assessment, we talked about summative assessment side at the end. We're not going into later on in May with those summative assessments, we're still doing all of those. But it does help to take what happens at the end of a summative assessment till June. So you can imagine finishing I sat around second week of May. Now we've got till the first week of June and there's an instructional period there where you're like, I'm gonna use it, but what does that look like? Some, some pieces around that, around the discussion about announcing the last day procedures. Same kind of thought, like when do we want to announce this? When does this happen? When is instructional? What do we do in between? The same thing happens now between semesters, but we just shifted that toward the end of the year. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility with instructional planning pieces. We would be able to continue to offer the four professional days, not a problem. In fact, what we would do is in balancing semester timeframes with the AV schedule and create it at balance, the easiest way to do that is to ratchet back to weeks operationally. But that does present some challenges because what happens with that is the start of school on what is essentially August 9th, which means teachers return back on contract around August 4th. And that does present some challenges. So let's, let's talk about challenges and barriers with that. The first is, is that with, it's gonna create a very, if we were to do this in 22, 23, so this next school year, one of the barriers we need to do is, probably very quickly, is a very shortened summer break during a very stressful time for teachers. I don't know that we want to go there. Do I think we can go there in 23, 24 with some time built in for planning and family preparation and all the pieces that come with it? Absolutely, like I said, we can do everything here. The discussion is then just around what long-term timeframe can we, can we make this work effectively? The other piece, we have some construction projects already slated. At the schools that I have listed there, those construction projects, if John wants to add anything else to this, we need every opportunity in the month of August to finish some of those projects. Because when we get out of this timeframe, we get staff out of buildings, we start tearing things apart. We need every opportunity we can. August 9th is gonna create some challenges in finishing some of those projects. For example, like are the toilets going to flush in the bathroom remodels? It's that type of operational piece, do you want to add anything to that?
No.
You want to talk about the toilets?
Yeah.
Okay, you got it covered. Okay. To add to, some pretty significant remodel pieces that are already in place, capital projects, that it would be a pretty significant project currently in change for that. But if we knew going into 23, 24, we could adjust for that from before. There is a level of instructional calendar revisions when you do that because what we don't want to do then is just squish instruction into a couple of weeks and in Christmas, present some finals and end of course students and assessments to students and then just leave, right? So there is an amount of, we need to add that prep day mid-semester before we leave for Christmas. And because of the data integration piece, we're gonna need to add a prep day on the back end. So it does use that additional working calendar day, but we have it ready to go, whether you choose to use it this upcoming year or you choose to use it in 23, 24, okay? There is, Dr. Bub addressed the communicate, or the conversation around the calendar differences with surrounding districts that way. I do want you to know that there, there are districts nearby that has an AV block that runs a semester that ends before semester break. They have some systems in place that allow them to do that instructional minute wise without going all the way back to August 9th. We can continue to explore that, but again, that would be continued conversations around what that would look like. But there is a model for that too as well to our neighbors to the west of us. We would need some time to adjust payroll cycles and Mr. Roberts, you might be able to elaborate more on this, but we have teachers on, teachers, administrators and staff on a number of different payroll cycles. There is the potential of a large number of teachers, in fact, probably the best majority of teachers, who get hired in the first part of August, start work on August 7th? Start work on August 9th and then not getting paid until September 25th because we get all paid once a month and then there's a payroll cycle that happens. Those would all need to be adjusted systematically because now they start work on the 17th. They get paid on the 25th, still a while, but it needs to yourself, right? Especially when you started work a couple of months prior to that. Last, logistically, not something we can't overcome, if that's something the board wants to pursue, but something to think about. We, through this, we talked about the adult instructional calendar side. We created a common summer calendar. The common summer calendar includes extended school year for some of our students with special education. It includes English language learner resources in order to provide those supports for students over the summer. And it includes summer school, middle school, high school, and then a kindergarten readiness program. We created a schedule where that happens all at the same timeframe. So statistically and operationally, we're not spread out all over the course of the summer. We can still run capital projects within that timeframe, it's easier managed. If those would end, we would have a one-week buffer in between when teachers would start back, the end of those summer programs and then the, when that would actually take, when the stop of instruction would happen. So I hope that has made sense, but I probably just didn't. But you have July, one week, teachers back, okay? And that is operationally a concern because that, that does restrict summer of what was able to take place within those buildings, the smaller capital projects within that timeframe. So in a nutshell, those are the recommendations, those are the two proposals. And I just want you to know, I appreciate the conversation around foundationally, what our kids do every day starts with this calendar, it really does. And then we move into bell schedules, some opportunities we have with bell schedules and then we move into this school year. And then in addition to that, what the opportunity we have to drive our professional learning, that of course engages our students with an increased learning that way and continuing to work within that framework calendar that we talked about, where we identify outcomes and goals of the course of the year. So any questions? And again, I'm happy to.
With the first proposal, and I know you're, you're still gonna find tune the bell schedule, will there be room in there to consider the bell schedule and adding back the 10 minutes to the high school lunch? Or?
No, bell schedule, uh, that's one of the things we have discussed, yes. We're looking at all facets, which includes digital intervention time, things like that.
Austin, where does this divorce is?
Uh, the, to a degree, uh.
The holidays are almost.
The holidays are, are close. I know that, we had that conversation with Boise prior, prior to the role, prior to this proposal, so we, there is an attempt to do that. Christmas break is off a little bit.
They actually go, oh, they just, they actually get out on the 23rd and they come back.
Yeah, last day with students, I believe, is the 22nd. There is a work day on the 22nd, so they built in that work day within the two as well. So the 23rd is a work day, 22nd is the last day for students.
Is there a reason why we picked the middle of the week to start the Christmas break? I'd actually have a couple of different people bringing this specifically up with me.
Well.
One needs to be more low standard work week.
Not a problem. So part of the conversation was around, if we ran it all the way to Friday, the 23rd seems really close to Christmas for holiday planning. So then that means, could we start on Monday and bring them back? What that does is bring students and staff back the day after New Year's and we kind of thought there might need to be a little time after that holiday. Wednesday does seem like a logical return timeframe within there in that we could, there would be some, it gives us, it gives us a timeframe for flexibility plus it also gives us a data integration standpoint on the 3rd.
How do teachers feel about starting, stopping in the middle of the week? Do they feel like instructional, the kids are still engaged and they feel like, you know what I mean? Sometimes coming back on Mondays, just to feel, and then on a Wednesday, they come back on Wednesday.
There's some readjustment time after a longer vacation time like that that takes place. And I think whether that happens on a Monday or on Wednesday, I don't know that best practice wise it's going to adjust. I can tell you, an effective teacher who engages students from the moment they step in the door, no matter what day we cut back, is gonna make it work.
Marcus, I'll talk about it, but one of the things, when, if we ended semester before they leave for winter break.
Thank you.
If you go too close to Christmas with that dismissal day, we just know historically that a lot of families take things off to get somewhere, which means they're missing finals, missing things that are going to, that, that, and they get back.
So that's what I'm saying, that 23rd becomes, I mean, I've seen, just thinking about where you're at on the 23rd right before Christmas. I've worked in a calendar that was close like that. And I think the lightest I've ever worked with the 22nd, but it becomes pretty dark, pretty dark.
But these are such good questions because these are the exact questions academic leadership team went through and said, what are the strengths of our calendar, what are the opportunities? And that came up as an opportunity, can we let Christmas out a little better? And at the end of the day, it came down to how many absence days can we try to mitigate? Both staff and students, it's all, what that could look like.
One of the things that I appreciate, Marcus, is on that proposal one and the letter you gave us explaining everything, I mean, it was extensive vetting. Which is important because it's the principals, the leadership teams in the building and all of that that knows what works and what doesn't work. So, and that's, I really appreciate that. And that was one of my big concerns on the proposal two was, we've cut, if that was something the board wanted to go with, we've cut a whole massive area of vetting with the different groups to weigh in and talk about challenges. You know, we're seeing some of the strengths and the weaknesses that you identified, who probably missed them because not all the eyes have been on.
That, yes, sir. I, I think that the group that hasn't received proposal two or haven't had an opportunity to provide feedback now, there are building principals and the leadership team. We took some of the same, similar feedback from here and adapted it to this. But correct, there could be some unintended consequences out there that we haven't identified operationally or academically from that leadership standpoint where some of the, we, we could have missed something given the timeframe that has been vetted, yes, sir.
I do appreciate though that you are looking at how to get our kids to end before, in the semester, before the classes. I, I actually told Boise schedule because they start only a couple days before us, but they end before Christmas break in their semester. And the reason is because we have CTE and all of those additional. So what we're essentially saying is, we're either have to make a decision between changing our AV schedule to get, to help and support CTE and all those processes or start earlier in the year, wait earlier, two or three weeks earlier than Boise, which has other problems. Or just leave our schedule where our kids go two weeks after Christmas break and end their semester. And those are the decision points. So I appreciate you guys working at it. I think that discussion requires a much longer discussion than making a decision on August start date in the same year that we're actually starting. So that's what I would, um, suggest, if we don't give up on that concept, we just maybe look at it from a longer perspective.
We would propose that we would take 22, 23 to, we, we, we could establish the calendar before we left this school year for 23, 24. Okay, like we could establish the dates, the times. Then we could work on some of the logistical challenges, the operational challenges, do some vetting with the instructional minutes because maybe we, we could adjust that to August 10th or August 11th. I mean, what could we do once our bells get finalized, once we have a better grasp on what might happen with transportation that way? That's why I think the conversation on the calendar where we present larger holidays and allow for family planning around larger holidays, right? I think that's important, but then the conversation becomes, instructional things are going to adjust. The year, the years of setting the calendar, three years in advance and it being the same as we move forward, that might, that likely be the viability that we're looking for in the future here. And I think if we remain flexible with this, we'll still hold it true to some of our values around, this is foundational, what kids are gonna learn, we're gonna serve ourselves as well, as our kids as well, so.
I also think you brought up something else around, um, the parent conferences. So right now, and I experienced this for six years, we have parent conferences like two or three weeks in when school starts. Can't tell, like teachers are barely assessing where the kids are at. So you, when you go in, they're like, oh, we're doing great, well, it's been three weeks of school, so, four weeks. So, um, I appreciate you guys thinking in the next layer of this, like, really when is the most valuable time to have our parent teacher conferences? And is there more than once a year that we should actually have that? Because especially if you have, I mean, in elementary it's a little different, but when we start getting to high school, your kids October, their grades are probably fine, but by the time you get to November, summer, or, and in second semester you get nothing. So you get power school notification and you're trying to get a hold of the teachers, but. And then I experienced this this year, you couldn't even get any parent conferences in middle school. Like so I ended up, the teacher had to go outside of their parent conference time to have the conference because there wasn't enough time slots for every parent that wanted to have a parent teacher conference. because there wasn't enough time slots for every parent that wanted to have a parent teacher conference. So this is.
Chris, is the plan for, well, to change that calendar to end the semester before Christmas break, is the plan include reaching out to families for feedback, right? Some, some way to get information?
Add to that to proposal two, wherein if we looked at the 23, 24 school rollout for that, we could take this third quarter, we could take the remainder of the year to gather that input, not only from, you know, principals, teachers, but we could gather that input from students, parents, families and say, what, what, knowing this is going to happen, what can we do to help mitigate some of those factors that provide some challenges for families? I think that's, that's the message we can share. Again, everything's off, everything we can do, it's just a matter of rolling out a timeline where we can gather that input more effectively and make some changes with some input. It is a big change.
Can we get that thing in, what are the bell schedule, depending on what the potential changes are?
Absolutely. Same process, same process. Just that, same process.
Do you, do you guys look at surveys on that type of stuff? Because I think those are, those are where we get major impacts and major feedback. Especially if the busing situation was causing our bell schedule. And I get a lot of concern for that. If we took away lunch, we got all these different, like, for lunch, but it was all because of the busing situation. And I struggle with our busing situation, it's taking up too much education.
I say just stress the whole thing. No, I, I will say.
Well, see, you're the calendar.
So I just, I just want to say, as, you know, a parent, I kind of just took for granted the calendar to realize, you know, all the time that went into it. So this is, this is really cool, just to hear how much time that you would estimate as a parent. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. I have a really good team. I love it.
Any other questions or comments on this part? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, and I, and I'll probably assume Dr. Bub will do introduction, but our next working session is strategic, a strategic planning presentation from Daniel Johnson, Associate Partner at Education Elements, and I'll.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Brett kind of walk through a little bit of the process here, but one of the things that we really identified that we want to be able to put forward is this strategic plan. Taking community input, taking all stakeholders, giving, what do we want to see? How do we want to see education, not just this year, not just next year, but kind of this long term? And how do we, how do we serve our community more effectively? One of the things that we really like about Ed Element is this idea of them helping with boots on the ground. And I think Brett might touch on that a little bit, but a lot of companies that we spoke with would have came to interview quite a few companies. And one of the things that they would do is they would work through some of the groups, they would help and they would guide. One of the problems with that guidance is when I stand in front of people and say, hey, tell us all the great things you're doing, I don't know what's always the best feedback. And so I'll kind of turn it over to Brett and walk through that. But the, the big piece that I think Ed Element brings to the table, and I'm sure that will be part of your presentation, is those boots, that boots on the ground, this is what your community is saying about what, where they see the, the West data district serving for the next 10 years.
Yeah, first, before I start on that, I do want to congratulate Marcus for creating a new, I think you call it report carding. I've never heard of that one before, so that's a report carding. And thank to Daniel and Shelby for spending a lot more hours here with us tonight than they probably anticipated.
Want to introduce you first?
So being back at the fall board retreat, we discussed doing a strategic plan. And then one of the biggest decision points for district administration was, do we do that strategic planning process ourselves? Or do we go with an outside entity and ask them to come in and do the work? And ultimately, we really felt that to get a really fresh perspective on our strengths, our weaknesses, our challenges, the ways we can improve, going with an outside organization that specializes in doing education, strategic planning was the way to go. So as Dr. Bub said, we spent a lot of time vetting a number of different organizations, some which don't specialize in education alone, they are more of a general contractor on that, and others are more education focused. And Elements, in every conversation we had, kind of rose to the forefront. Because of the fact that they were willing to actually be, as Dr. Bub said, boots on the ground in our facility, meeting with stakeholder groups, engaging with them, as opposed to a lot of companies that just wanted to send surveys out electronically to get input in, or only would ever consider meeting virtually, or those sorts of things. The reputation that Ed Elements has had in districts across the country, the products that we've seen that they've created for districts across the country, really made them stand out to us as we went through this process. So we asked them if they'd be willing to come out and in person, do come to the same proposals that they've gone through with Dr. Bub, myself, Marcus, and lay out that, the process by which they would engage our stakeholders, answer your questions, and hopefully you'll walk away with the same feeling we had, which was this is a really good partner that we could work with to create a truly authentic, comprehensive strategic plan for our district. So with that, turn it over to Daniel and Shelby and let them wow you with their presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Brett. So, okay, so Shelby and I have been debating on if we move up front or not. I'm going to try it like this, it's kind of uncomfortable for me as a, as a former teacher, like eyes up here but not on the board, but we'll do our best. The slides that you have printed out are not fully aligned with the slides. We slimmed it down, so hopefully that's good news for this presentation. There's also a lot of appendix slides in there, so thanks for wanting to pull up for more. So we'll try to keep this as kind of, you know, brief, but comprehensive as we can. And certainly stop at a few points to open for conversation, but feel free to ask any, ask away at any time as well. So I'll keep our, thank you Brett, Dr. Bub, really appreciate that kind introduction. We are at Education Elements, we are an education consultancy. Kind of our, our primary work is around helping school systems at every layer become more responsive, whether that's literally in the classroom to the organization at large. We have a, a range of services, we focus on curriculum and instruction. We do some teacher retention and recruitment work. And then we have a very large set of services generally around strategic planning and long-term strategic planning for districts such as yourself. And we have a lot of experience doing that. We, it says 10 years, I think we're in our 11th right now. We've worked in far more than a thousand schools and districts. We're in most states across the country at this point. This would be my first Idaho project, but I have worked in Utah, so, and traveled all, all around here as well. So we're very excited and privileged to be here tonight. I know several of you have kind of expressed thankful or condolences that the meeting's been so long. It's been really helpful to hear, get to know you all just through your personalities on the board and your roles in the district. And as Dr. Bub said, I joked about that, that this is the way that we like to engage and really get to know you all in person, hands on, and let that drive the work. And I didn't, I'll just do a very quick introduction, Daniel Johnson, Associate Partner. I'm from Washington DC, so I flew today and fly out tomorrow, and it's very late for me. So if I stumble on some words or short thoughts, I apologize. But I'm, I'm a former middle and high school science teacher. I taught in Mississippi and then New York City, and then I'm in my eighth year consulting with Education Elements. And I'll, Shelby.
Shelby McIntosh, I am based in Austin, Texas, and I'll come to Austin today, I'll tomorrow. But I'm privileged and honored to be here. I have also been in the education consulting space for about 15, 16 years now. Did some policy work in DC before then, so spent quite a bit of time in DC. But I've always been in education, started as a teacher, a school leader, practitioner, before getting into things like policy and consulting. But strategy work is some of my favorite, and I was really glad that Daniel let me tag along. So I'll be joining him and just kind of walking through our process with you guys.
So we wanted to start and talk just a little bit about our understanding of West Data. And I think this is certainly limited, but a couple of quick facts. West Data is the largest school district in Idaho, who educate nearly 40,000 students, seven schools, across a very large region of the state. And you've traditionally been growing annually. I know it presented some, some challenges within that, but just a general trend of growth. The size of the district, both geographically and in population, requires a delicate balance between autonomy and shared direction. And I think that's really important to think about when we talk about strategic planning. How do you, how do you act as one, but also recognize you have several zones, schools and regions, and a lot of autonomy that needs to be considered within that. The pandemic, of course, and this is certainly not unique to West Data, but I know you all have looked this, has introduced new academic, unity workforce challenges that we've never encountered before and will forever change the way we operate. And strategic planning, and this really ties together, you know, Brett, Dr. Bub, and the conversations that we've had with your district leadership, that strategic planning provides an opportunity for a newly appointed board and new makeup of your board and your district leadership to involve and unite stakeholders around a future for West Data. That's reflective of lessons learned and responsive to current future needs. And I think this is a great opportunity in time, you know, space and time for strategic planning to happen. Both again, given the new makeup of your leadership, but also given that we hope that we're coming on a scale under this pandemic. And it gives us an opportunity to really think forward. I'm going to keep this pretty quick here, but I do think it's really important so to, to frame this within the larger picture, not just within our West Data and even education, but also just generally across our economy and society at large. So this is just a picture of what we, what's kind of the textbook definition of an economic K-shaped recovery, which is really what we're seeing through the pandemic. And a K-shaped recovery is really when certain segments of the, the economy recover while other segments continue to suffer. The, the marking of a K shape is like a continued growth between those two, right? So it creates that K even further. And so those are just some examples there, like your Amazons and Zooms, of course, they've really taken off in this environment, whereas other segments of our economy really struggle. In DC, corporate real estate is like, they don't know what to do right now, right? So like that's a part of the, the economy that's just kind of tanked and is still continuing to like get pushed out. So I think it's just important to again, think a little bit, big picture here. And then we can zoom that in on education, where the economy is learning, right? Our, our GEP is our, is our student performance. And of course, yeah, maybe that's not a good thing to say. But you can, you can follow the analogy. But the idea that, you know, the pandemic and the disruptions that it caused, caused, caused those disruptions in learning, and they also amplify some of the existing challenges we had. And, you know, this is, I, I think a little risky of a picture. I'm not sure there's many schools in this kind of top sphere, but school systems maybe are more proficient with things like education technology, personalization of their services, professional development, and the rollout of that to teachers and the, the ways in which that gets out, maybe at-home supports. We're more suited to kind of handle these changes than school systems may be unfamiliar with, with those, with those systems, without investments in blended learning or strong at-home supports, or relying really on highly standard operating procedures that were very difficult to manage in a, in a very agile time. And if we think about stimulus or Esther Fund, CARES Act, supplying funding, a lot of these things, and Dr. Bub talked today about, you know, the funding for subs, right? A lot of these are stopgap measures. They're really just to kind of cut, stop the bleeding right now, but not necessarily to react towards the future and toward, to get us in that upward direction. And it kind of eliminates some of the gaps you've experienced. So I'm going to just talk a little bit more about the knickers of strategic planning, I promise. But the through line here is what we want to be thinking about. So what are the larger fundamental shifts that we need to make to really cover the gaps that we've just experienced? And also live within a new reality? So the ways in which we plan, the culture that we advocate, the resources that we allocate, just the general philosophy of our management, what are the shifts that we need to make? And that's happening across every segment of the economy, not just education. What, how, where we work is changing. And I think the same goes for the way we think about our teachers and our students. So our prior assumptions about what teachers, families and students need are no longer the same as they were two years ago. And so when we think about strategic planning, we think about, you know, what is the leadership? What is the, what are the strategies we use? What are the skills and knowledge that we advocate and employ? What are the things that we focus on? And then what are the through lines of our district? Some through lines that we've seen right now that we think are really important. Accelerated learning, so making up for learning loss that's occurred. Increasing flexibility, both for our families and our students, but also for our teachers. That's certainly the demand of our workforce right now. Upskilling and reskilling towards the, the, the skills of our, of our updated workforce. Personalization, shared and distributed leadership, so we can react better in times of crisis. So anyways, my point is, is there, there's several through lines here. We, we do need to be able to think about those within the context of each individual district. So I don't want to come in here and say, these are our through lines and these should be yours. But we do want to help West Data think about what are the things that are going to position us on, towards a successful future. And so the last thing I, I want to point out, and then we'll talk more specifically about our methodology, is just strategic planning at large. And I heard the North Star tonight was, was shared. So these are on the board here, some components of a strategic plan, mission and vision. Actually very common and common statements that you hear across different school districts. Those are very typically very similar. But the ways of the priorities, the goals, the strategies, the approach, that's where you're going to see differences across districts. And so the goal of our work is to help you all identify your through lines, build those around your community needs, your community feedback, so that you have a plan that's a place that really represents the needs that you think are, are most pressing as we look towards the next five to 10 years. And so a few beliefs that we, we bring to this work. Collected buy-in is developed when strategic plans are developed with community. I, I heard from Brett and Dr. Bub share about other firms. A lot of times you hear about teams coming in and creating strategic, strategic plans, and then they get communicated out. And our goal is that this work is collectively built, that we're engaging different members of your community at every step, that we're keeping you all updated and invested and engaged as a board. The way that we plan is as important as the plan itself. So it's not just about getting you a plan, it's about building your capacity, building protocols, building different ways you can think about strategic planning. That we plan for change, not perfection, that your plan is agile, it's sturdy, but it's, 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 it's open for changing circumstances. And that when our teams have shared direction, we can break down silos and hierarchies. And I think that's really important, district of your size, to be thinking about what is our shared direction? We built it together or we all align? So when we, when we operate as a large organization, we know that, that we're operating together. So we're going to transition here to talk more specifically, but I will take just a moment. If there's anything from that opening that stands out in terms of, you know, what resonates with your experience in West Data or where you are right now? Or any of the feedback or any other questions at this point?
Other than the only thing I would be, is I totally support that, that it needs to be the community involvement. It's, it's a critical piece so that we have buy-in. Because otherwise, if we're just delivering what we develop to them, we're never going to have value.
Yeah. Great, well, on that note, we'll talk a little bit about the methodology itself and what the work looks like. And I'm going to have.
Thank you, Daniel. One thing that Daniel mentioned, I think is really important to know that informs this methodology here, is that it's a, we, we really preach this idea of planning for team, not for perfection. I think you'll have a lot of organizations in school districts that feel like their end product is this really beautiful image or graphic that lives in the boardroom and hangs on a wall, or this really expensive, comprehensive green binder that sits on a shelf and you never pull it out and look at it again after you put all this work into it. And while we do think the visuals that go with planning are really important and that you have a product at the end of it, that it really is the process that got you there. And that you end with something that feels like you give, it gives you direction now, but something like Daniel said, is agile and can change. And as you learn more about the world around you and learn more about your stakeholders, you can respond to that. You've got the bones and the structure and the skillset and the capacity to continue to plan, but you're not going to end this process with a perfect plan that lives on a wall for 10 years. You hopefully end this process with really strong ability to continue to plan in a really strategic way that's connected to your community. So when you see these steps, I'll, I'll walk you through them pretty quickly. That, that's the concept that informs this work as we go. So the first phase there, planning aligned, this is kind of a high level. So the first phase there, Plan and Align, this is kind of a high level view, and then I'll just briefly go into each of these deeper. But Plan and Align there is just like it sounds. We take some time to get really grounded in the process. We create a governance structure that has feedback loops built into it, but really we spend a lot of time planning the community engagement, I would admit. So we think really intentionally about how we're going to engage the community, who specifically we need to engage, what are the right ways to get them involved, the right questions to ask them, what do we need to know from them? So all that planning takes place right from the beginning. And then in this foundational stage, it's just like it sounds, we're creating that foundation. We're doing all of that community engagement work so that we can identify what the overall strengths of the district are, what are our opportunities for growth, really define our strategic direction in terms of the mission, the vision, but really the design priorities, what are going to be the pillars of the plan according to what our community is telling us that we really need to focus on in the near and the long term. After that, those two phases, we get into the design phase, which is actually what people usually think about first. This is the writing of the plan. But in reality, it's funny, I'm wrapping up a project in Utah and I'm realizing we spent almost twice as much time doing Plan and Align and Foundations than we did at the whole line of the work. Because that takes so much thought and intention to make sure you've got the right people involved and involved in the right way. And then at that point, the design kind of happens organically, you really, it's like a snowball effect, it's really kind of moving quickly at that point. But design is just like it sounds, because that's where you really get into identifying initiatives that are going to serve those priorities within your plan, outcomes you hope to see, how are you going to measure your progress? And then it, I don't even want to say it ends, but I guess our work kind of wraps around this launch phase where we talk about, okay, now how do we put this into action? Who's going to own what? What are our milestones going to be? How will we know that we're going to have this the right way? And how are we going to continue to communicate our progress with our community? Communication doesn't start there. It's something that is embedded in every process here, but we just want to make sure part of our launch plan is a really thoughtful communications and promotions plan that lives on. These kind of go into a little bit more detail here. What I like about these slides is it talks kind of about the outputs of each phase. So I'm just, I think that's the only part I haven't mentioned yet. So in Plan and Align, again, it, an output is going to be, what is our engagement plan going to be? What is our governance model? Who's going to be involved in what level and what role? I think our governance model is actually one of the strongest parts of our methodology because again, it is really intentional around who lives in like a steering capacity, who serves on these design committees, and that is all established right from the beginning. Outputs that come out of this foundational stage, again, this is where all the community engagement happens. So you get readouts from those engagement activities, you get a readout, you get a data review process. It really is, again, I've already mentioned this, but the bones of the plan, you can kind of see, if you think about it like building a house, not only is the foundation laid here, but also the framing has happened here. So when we come into design, we're really now just, I'm, that's where my help home building terminology ends. I don't know what happened after that, but you're putting the walls up and painting things on it, I guess is what happened after that. So, you know, the outputs of design are just like it sounds. This is where you have that, what we often refer to as canvas, you know, the structure that you're familiar with, where you've got the focus areas, you know it from these potential initiatives. It starts to feel really actionable at this point and you're ready to just do the work, put it into action. There's a lot of excitement that happens at this point. I will also say that one of the things that I'm really proud of that we do is we try to really infuse a lot of innovation here. So our, what we call often design workshops, you're going to see things like design thinking processes brought into this, where we push them to look at organizations, other school districts, other organizations that are not in education, really ground them in what they're trying to solve for, what is the priority? And then think both within and outside the box for creative solutions, so you're not just recycling things that the district has always done. So this is where we really push them to bring in different perspectives, look at other organizations, try to get really innovative in how they're filling in the components of the plan. And I've probably already mentioned this, but then at the launch phase, we do feel like it is important that you feel like you have a really polished, finished product. So we have in-house design services in the launch phase, and we partner with you, it gives you something that you are really proud of in terms of the look and the feel of it, that it captures everything that a lot of people have put a lot of work on, that work into at this point, something that you can promote and be proud of and share out and communicate in a very exciting way. And so there's certainly a product here deliverable, but again, we're always kind of preaching that this is our plan for now. You know, this is our plan that we have that's going to remain agile, that we're going to continue to evolve and update as we go, because we're going to continue to learn, as we put it, to action here. So I love this point here, just about how we want to make sure that both in the physical representation of the plan, but also in the components of the plan, that it is very directly representative of the people that may get through our community. And so at every turn, that's what's guiding our decisions in terms of how we try to guide you through that process. I just want to go through a lot really quick, so I'm happy to pause and see what questions you guys have about our process. I'll go back to this overview slide here.
What's been your kind of experience or how have you helped districts or be able to integrate this in the community? Community involvement's a big piece of it. I guess where I'm getting at is I think back to like the school district my kids went to. And coming out of the strategic planning process and all of that, there was a, I'll use the term a slogan mantra that was everywhere. And, you know, theirs was the advantage. And it was a quick way to integrate that in the community, that everything was referenced back to that versus, you know, the document is important, but sometimes that's a more difficult piece for people to find tangible. Is it something you like, don't like, or?
Yeah. I mean, I'll give my answer and I'm curious what you think, Daniel. I think different parts of your plan are going to serve a different purpose. If you think about like your, I think, mission, vision, all those things kind of get interchanged in a lot of different ways, but you should have something that puts, it should sit on, fit on a bumper sticker, fit on a coffee mug or something. That is a really good unifying message. It's, you guys have used the term North Star tonight. Like, that's the kind of thing that you want centralized in your plan, that you can hope like a PR campaign into, that people know exactly what you're talking about. There's familiarity with it and there's unification around it. That's really important. But it's not enough alone, right? There also has to be, in particular for your administration and your practitioners, there has to be the meat of the plan around, okay, but what does that mean for me in my school and in my classroom? So I do think that's a really important part, but it serves as one component of what a strategic plan does.
Yeah, I think, I think that's very important. Two other ways I see this play out. One is some districts really want to create like a dashboard of, these are the focus areas, these are the types of initiatives that we're tackling, and this is our general timeline or anticipated timeline. And they like to revisit those quarterly or biannually and say, this is what we set out. So just something that's in place. Another thing that we've seen, and I think the South Brunswick example is one of these, which is in the slides, their process was really focused all about community engagement. So the plan was great, that's what they want, you know, if the plan came out of it, but what they really wanted was the community to feel like they participated in something. So they built those design sessions that Shelby's referring to, really, they really amplified those up to bring a lot of community members in for those sessions. They had a few different sessions each with a different focus, and they went through a design thinking process. And what that did was it actually, it helped identify community members who like wanted to stay involved in those initiatives. So they actually had a wider net of community members that they could call on, and they cite that now. They say, we have a much wider, you know, set of community members who we know are invested in each one of these things. And I think for us, to that point, what it's done is helped just create more awareness and a feeling that this strategic planning is alive. It's not just a thing that, you know, the district pushed out one year and then you were stuck with for five years.
In that South Brunswick, where are they at in the journey?
That plan was, I think, a little two years ago? Is that what you're asking? I think so.
Yeah, I was just curious around your.
Because it was pre-COVID, so it would have been, but it right pre-COVID.
Yeah. So you said, what's their execution success?
I mean, first of all, we'd be happy to make a reference, but I think, I think it's been successful in the aims that, like I described. They would tell you, if you talked to them on the phone right now, that they have a clear set of initiatives that they're working on as a community, and they've got teams that are working through those. In terms of the challenges of execution on those, I mean, I think every district has faced some pretty significant challenges in executing on your side of your priorities in the last few years. But I think in general, you know, the goals that they set out to achieve, they feel are living in their district.
I can't remember if this was a, just a call I was on, or if they did a webinar with us or something, but I do think something they would tell you too, is that when COVID hit, because they had gone through this process, they had structures in place about how to pivot and how to make decisions very quickly and very responsibly with, like, within the bounds of this, you know, core plan that they had created. So their initiatives looked very different now than they did when they planned with us in 2019, because the world has changed. But they had, you know, the structure in place, the priorities in place, and I think some skillsets in place that they didn't have before they go into this process. One other question, when you guys say community, can you define what that specifically means?
Yeah, I'm curious if.
This sounds like a cop out, but it's not. Our job is to ask you what that means, honestly. We, the first thing we have to do is understand what, how you define your community, the stakeholders that you serve. I mean, we're going to push you to think about it in a lot of different ways. Actually, one of my favorite things is this.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually will take you through a process where we have you think about like stakeholders of different groups. This is one of a few different major C's where it's actually influence and interest, where we talk about, you're going to have some stakeholders that are really high level of interest right now, but maybe, or sorry, really high level of influence, but maybe a low level of interest. They're not really super interested in this process, they have a lot of influence, and you're going to want to think about engaging them in a very specific way. Also, you're going to have stakeholders that have a high level of interest in this because they feel like, I'm going to be deeply impacted by this, but maybe not a lot of level of influence. And so there's a different way that you would engage them and involve them. So again, that's, we could, we're going to push you or push your teams to think about identifying their community in different ways, but we can't really define that. For you, it's on our job to define it for you.
I think what you can help with though is like, if you look at, like, the example here, community in this definition includes their, us. And so, and I just want, when, sometimes when we talk about community, you think about districts in the outside of the world, but I think what you're saying is, community is a really broad definition that even anybody can be good in, it's what level are they included in, for sure.
But a district our size, what's kind of the timeframe from start to finish that it takes to, I know there's change both of them.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't know if we'd answer it the same way. But only one person says. Yeah. And I talked to Brett a bit about this too. I think, I think the average is probably four to five months. If you go longer than that, it can start to feel a little drawn out. Six months is probably still okay, but I'd say four to five months is the sweet spot. We, I had a district last year say, we want to get this done in three months. Smaller district than you are, although still 15 schools, I mean, still a good size, and it was a sprint. I mean, it was, and I don't know if that skips you the experience that you're looking for, so I don't know if you agree.
No, I agree. I think it also depends on where your summer break falls, because that'll really impact your level of engagement with the community. So like the project I was just referencing that we wrapped, we did a lot of the Plan and Align and foundations before the summer break, but decided to wait to do the engagement until school started back up again, which actually was a great time because everyone's all like invested and excited about school and wanting to be engaged. And so it went a little longer just because we took some time, a break in the middle while we knew people were less engaged.
Any more questions?
I have a couple people left about that left alone.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Where are we at in the process?
So we're not. This is, this is the very beginning, really strategic plan calls. I'm just per view of the board, so I didn't want to engage in that. We have talked a little bit about pricing, stuff like that there. I think the decision point would be, yep, this sounds like somebody we'd like to go with, or hey, we want to probably look at what some other options are. And so. But it sounds like, so from a timeline, sorry, from a timeline standpoint, because I would love to have this rolled out to the beginning of next year. Timeline standpoint, I would love to get that on an agenda more sooner rather than later, so we can start it and head into the next full year with this strategic plan in place.
What do you need from us?
I think it would just be a discussion on where everybody stands, if you feel comfortable with this, and then we can move forward and sit down and chat.
What might, what might be helpful if we want to move in that direction would be too, and I know you offered it, would be to have a series of references that maybe like we did for the superintendent, we could pass out to different board members, that can make contact with those, those other organizations and that could be part of the discussion or something as we look at contractorship.
That sounds good. We'd be happy to share references and we shared a few, but we can, we can.
Yep, and they've done that as well. So we've reached out to some districts. In fact, I think we have, and from, and so, yeah, we'd be happy to.
Yeah. Great.
Other questions?
So I'm lost in front of all that. So are we, are, do you, I mean, reference one piece, I think that's good. Can I give us an idea of what you need to back from the board and what you need to come and handle?
Well, here's what I would say. I would, I would say, we, how about we excuse you guys, let's have just a conversation about it and say, hey, that way we have direction. Yeah, let's continue moving forward. I mean, that work for you guys?
Yeah. Sounds good.
That way we can talk behind your back.
Yeah, yeah. We know. So it's not that you have to get in the room.
He compared it.
We included a handful of samples, again, just to kind of double down on what Shelby shared around, we believe plans should really represent, you all know plan looks alike. There's a few other examples that just dig in a little bit further, but we can certainly share a digital copy of this and we'll make sure that it gets out to you all, and these all have like applicable links on them, so you can explore them further.
Thanks, I already, you know, probably that.
Oh, great. Yeah, I didn't know if you got that, so.
Have you worked with a district outside?
Yours? Yeah.
Yeah, I could give you some, well, I think Canyon's in Utah is probably close to you guys, which I think is one of my students they have. And then a couple in Texas, like we get to, that are right at 40, 45.
Yeah. More in touch. There's some people that probably right around here.
I would say too, that while we may not have done comprehensive strategic plans for, we've got, we've got mega urban districts and we've got teeny tiny. I just did some work with a 200 student district this past year. And not all of that work is strategic planning, but a lot of it is very large scale strategy work, and so if that helps, like, we definitely have a handful of strategic plans that are right about your size, but we've worked with every school district of every size. Thanks. Thanks for making the trip. Yeah, of course. Glad you have drug on that.
I'll say from his home. Thank you.
Hope you don't fly for Denver tomorrow.
No, no. Why? Oh, yeah.
Oh, I know. My wife's like, I'm a movie dancer. Yeah, she's a re-grouping out. That's the game. Yeah. She grew up. She's a good lady. Yeah. She grew up. She's a good lady. Yeah. We're not shy. Okay. Before I come up to her, that, hey, hey. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
So I would like to hear from everybody, but it's something we want to move forward with. I usually believe I like to practice in something that you might be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelby already leave? She was standing in there. Oh, gee, yeah.
Thank you.
So I would like to hear from everybody, but that's something we want to move forward with. I usually believe I like to try and present something that united the community. I think it's something the community had asked for and put in this, something that we can all kind of gather around. This gives common sense. But was that something, I mean, I was looking here.
I, maybe just for the board, is, you know, this is one, one company, but I know that you and me have looked at a lot of companies. So, so if you could just give a snippet of that to everybody and like, what really had this one stick out to you, if you like it?
Boots on the ground rather than strategic. I think that was a big piece. There, a lot of them offered like, hey, virtual meetings. We all know how virtual meetings go. A lot of them offered, hey, we're going to do surveys. They want to analyze these surveys. This was one of the very few companies that had the capabilities. Some offered boots on the ground, but it was over a 12 to 18 month period. So this was the shortest amount of time. That was kind of our, our piece. Short amount of time, engage the community with their people having, be part of those. And because, because I think to your point, I want to be part of those meetings. I want to give some of, some of that input. I want our staff to give some of that input. I want our board to be able to give some of that input. You're forwarding the meeting, the superintendent does a great job, he's an amazing job. I think it's really important to be able to.
The other question that goes to this, and I know I mentioned it to you, was, you know, obviously on something like this, I don't, I don't know what cost is, but does it, how does it fall within the need to do an RFP versus not doing RFP?
We looked into that. We are, we're, we looked into that and are still looking into it. So we're just checking on a couple of things to make sure that you don't have to walk through that process.
But, I mean, that could, that could force a change in.
Yeah, I, there's some information in code. We're just trying to.
There was a question. You said you talked to some of your references. So anything that you would like to add to it?
They all, well, I spoke to two. I don't know if you, if you, I don't know, Brad, if you were to, I spoke to two, and they both that they, that the process was very simple, but very, like, it was easy to go through. It wasn't like, oh, we have one more meeting, here we go. But it forced them, the one superintendent from Brunswick said that his reflection was, at the end of it, he probably reflected more on his own practices and some of the practices within the district than he ever expected. He thought he was going to get all this feedback, and okay, how do we put that in place? Whether it's just this level of reflection, not just himself, but entire staff.
Just taking your timeframe that you talked about, wanting to have this in place by the beginning of next school year, and if it takes four to five months, the cost kind of ticked. That's why I would think this was something we need to come up with more sooner than later. Definitely. To the question that I would have is, what would, I mean, for Dr. Bub, concerns, things that you would want to know or do or whatever before you entertain this endeavor?
Cost?
I think it's probably about a hundred dollars. If we want to do the full, really lots of boots on the ground to highlight the level of community engagement in person, it might end up being 110, 120, sort of something.
You said you spoke to New Jersey.
Looks like I can't tell, your eyes like maybe you're thundering something.
I'm not right. I think that it would be money and in a good year. And after launch everything that we've done through, I think that we agree.
In your experience doing strategic plans is five months, that's reasonable something.
And starting to push it out more than that, does it cause it to drag on? You start pushing it out beyond that.
South Brunswick is 10 schools and 85,000 students.
She mentioned they have some schools they work for in Texas that record 40, 45,000 kids, and.
I should have asked if they have done any plans during. You know, I just hope that when we have some of our meetings, that everything do not totally focus to COVID, that we'll be back over again.
They have, because they've been in the schools recently, and they've been working in districts right now. So they are currently in the middle of it.
And how that influences their end product?
Well, I think one of the concerns always that I've heard from them is, do you get a really well-represented population that engages in the process? If they're not willing to come first, sure, people are nervous about being in person. Do you get a well-represented kind of community's body and that's the concern? I think what they're trying to figure out, be their solutions for both in-person and virtual as they come through, so.
I will tell you just for me, kind of, I think it's money well spent too. Just off the cuff, I'm a little hesitant sometimes when I just hear from one company. But that can be outweighed also by references and experiences and word of mouth that kind of offsets that unknown. So then that's a big piece for me is, is to leave it comfortable, just talking of references and seeing.
When I send someone a reference, I don't want to get caught. I doubt in my emails, I can send them, I'll send them to everybody. I don't know how you guys will look that up as far as. Also.
I am really, I didn't need as much of the reference because what they showed us is standard. Like, that's how, in the job, it's just, so what I'm really familiar about is how we actually engage people to get the non-specific kind of info. We've got, we're a major process, so if you have reference, you don't have to.
Yeah, if you don't know, I'll hold on, it's something, Canyon right now. I'll hold on to some clues, because there were interactive, we did some clues interacting with right now, that's what that costs us.
And when you, when you checked with other meetings, was there rising?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, right around that same price. Yes.
But just for kind of corporate preference, that little word is probably nine, I guess. So, so I thought that was.
This is your strategy plan every day, like, 11, 12. Oh, yeah, sure.
It is. I, so I, yeah, I mean, I liked it. I agree with Renee. I mean, I think it's money well spent, and, you know, the coffee's ticking a little bit, but it's just, it doesn't need to be on an agenda and make sure they're comfortable with, and trust of the references and stuff.
Perfect. We'll move forward, we'll get some preferences. All right?
Great.
Okay, so, yeah, now we'll move into executive session. And so I'll just need someone to, to make a motion, and remember whoever makes that motion, you need to read the code there verbatim, and we'll do a roll call vote, so. Can you read that one?
Sure, I'll read it short. I'm trying to make a motion, item code 74261B, considering the evaluation of the system was just pulled down, or your complaints returned right against the public office or employee staff, individual agent, or public student.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for trustee, right? We'll do a roll call, trustee Azuna?
Aye.
Trustee Redford?
Aye.
Trustee Bergia?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Well, chair, go time. Or she passes that to. Okay, and we'll just hold on until Troy tells us where.